Doesn't need to be a different video.
Just open it.
We're good. Okay. Welcome to the committee of the whole. I'm acting mayor, councillor Hereford, and I'll be chairing the meeting. We're going to move to recess and we'll get underway in how long do we ten? Five minutes. We're going to take a five minute recess and we'll get underway. So that'll take us to 11:25. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. We're back to committee of the whole. We actually ran a little over with our budget meeting, so much so that we blew past our notice period for our committee of the whole. So what we need to do is I'm going to ask for a motion to terminate and then turn it back over to which moved by councillor Stoner, second by councillor French, any opposed, motion carries. I'm going to pass it back over to Mayor Elliott to set things correct procedurally and then we'll take it back up.
All right, council, I need a motion to waive notice to hold a special business meeting at 11. No, special because we have noticed on a special. So motion to waive notice to hold a special business meeting at 11:25 on September 27, 2022, moved by councillor French, seconded by councillor Stoner, any opposed, motion carries. I'm now going to exercise my right to hand over the chair. Oh, adopt the agenda, which is the same agenda as the committee of the whole. By councillor French, second by councillor Stoner, any opposed, motion carries. And now I'm going to exercise my right to hand over the chair to acting mayor councillor Hereford.
Thank you. That was a first for me anyways. So our first order of business is a delegation from the Squamish Offroad Cycling Association. And we've got Ian Low, executive director here to present to us. Are you ready to go, Mr. Low?
I am ready to go.
All right, over to you.
Good morning, Mayor Council and staff. My name's Ian Low. I'm the executive director with Sorka. And what we're here today to talk about is the renewal of the Valley Cliff Jump and Skills Park. And but before we get there, I'm just going to give a little bit of a one, one oh one of Sorka as well as this particular facility. So Sorka. Just make sure this is progressing. There we go. Sorka, as you may all know, Squamish Offroad Cycling Association, it was established in 1992. We just celebrated our 30 years and it was established with 23 members back then. It has grown considerably since. It's a volunteer led nonprofit society with an 11 person volunteer board, two of which are with me today, including Jeff Norman, our president, and Patricia Ing. We've got three full time staff and six seasonal staff, including five trail crew. These trail crew additionally lead our volunteer building efforts so they can leverage that skill of building trails and the quality of building trails to a large population. We, we manage and monitor 300 plus kilometers of trail within the network. And this particular trail network is very attractive for local, regional, domestic, international ridership to the community. To many, Sorka is a group of fun loving mountain bikers that organize weekly community building events. But once you peel back the layer, Sorka is a professionally run organization with an envious board of directors and a staff that lead or play a key role in community molding advocacy initiatives, land management discussions and reconciliation with Squamish Nation through sport. Squamish has partnership agreements with the province of B.C., B.C. Parks, MOUs and license agreements with Squamish Nation and private landowners and FIFA service agreement with the district of Squamish. We are just about to hit 3,400 members, which is a high watermark for our organization. And we have over 5,000 newsletter subscribers and well over 10,000 Instagram followers. More related to today's discussion, we also have two skills park license agreements. But before we get there, I just thought I'd share Sorka's mission, maintaining and expanding the mountain bike trail network for diverse trail users, organizing races, social events and programs, probably what we're most noted for, advocating on behalf of mountain biking and the trails, encouraging responsible and sustainable use of trails and creating opportunities for inclusion in the Squamish mountain bike community. So what is the Valley Cliff Jumps and Skills Park? For those that haven't been there, here's a quick drawing of where it is. So the official address is actually off Clark Drive, 37890 Clark Drive. However, it's just located off Valley, Valley Drive behind Chances Casino. It is in a B.C. hydro right of way. So those are the hydro lines that run through that area. And again, just as a bit of a visual representation, it, the facility itself has a series of dirt jumps that are ideal for mountain biking as well as dirt jumping activities. And it's got a paved pump track. Obviously, the paved pump track is in the middle there and bottom right. And from three year olds on run bikes, all the way to some of the best international mountain bikers and dirt jumpers in the world. There's zone and an area for to hone skills for everyone at this little facility. The park is an important resource for youth, teens and developing bikers to progress their skills in a controlled environment before heading out into Squamish's more remote trails. Little bit of background on the actual facility itself. The mountain bike network and skills parks are central to the growing mountain biking, community and outdoor recreation economy in Squamish. Developers, and in this example, Polygon on the bottom left, use the trail network as a core attractant to draw customers to the community. And dozens of local businesses are directly relying on mountain biking and mountain bikers for their income. Close to $4 million of local wages are supported by mountain bike tourism pre, post pandemic. So the facility was built between 2017 and 2019, primarily by volunteers as well as Ted Templeton and Dream Wizards with an estimated market value of between $200,000 and $300,000. There was also some grants from Worcester Blackham Foundation, 25,000, I believe it was for to pave the skills park that's in behind Ted in this picture up here. Skills parks are becoming commonplace in municipalities throughout the province as a means of providing relatively low cost recreation options for a wide range of residents. Majority of skills parks are being installed around the province are now funded and maintained by the municipalities. Some of the recently built skills parks include Pemberton, Campbell River, Langford, Whistler, Chilliwack, Mission, Sanage, Powell River and Animo with municipal contributions for these projects ranging between 85,000 and 2.1 million. While nonprofits are participating in some of these projects covering up to 50% of construction costs, the vast majority are driven directly from the municipality. Finally, the alignment with this facility to the current council priorities and namely planted in the environment, the economy and local jobs and neighborhood connectivity in public spaces. So the five year license was originally signed on July 24, 2017. On May 31, 2022, it moved to a month to month term, and that's where we are today. Under the current license agreement, district of Squamish provides use of the land at no cost, remuneration for its incremental insurance, which is approximately $2,000 per year, provides complimentary access to water, which is critical for the shaping and manipulating of the jumps and provides garbage bin servicing. Sorka is currently responsible for the initial and all ongoing maintenance and construction costs, jump lines and pump track, insurance, ongoing monitoring, maintenance, drainage, signage and ongoing landscape. As what we've learned through this process is that dirt jumps are organic matter and they do require constant maintenance from skilled and experienced builders as well as annual upgrades to ensure jump shape, landing speed between jumps are maintained optimal. It should also be noted that the language in the current license requires many updates as it, as it really is designed for an initial license agreement. So there's a lot of language around the construction and the opening of the, of the facility. So what our ask is today. So we're requesting a five year license renewal with the following renumeration language added. So $500 per month for minor upgrades and maintenance of the facility, namely ensuring the jump lines remain safe and in good working order. This will be awarded to a contractor who is skilled and experienced in this trade. This is not a skill set that comes typically with a trail crew. And then on a maximum of $10,000 per year for a one time comprehensive annual refurbishment and reshaping of the dirt jumps likely early spring, because winter does play havoc to the, to the shaping of the jumps. This will ensure jump shape, takeoffs, landings, transitions, fall zones and speed and path of circulation remain safe for the long term. And that's really, I think, what this is all about is creating a long term strategy for this facility. To be clear, Sorka will continue to be responsible for maintaining the facility. However, we will find an experienced contractor in this sector to oversee the work we are requesting to be reimbursed. Sorka is not, and to be clear, we do have two licenses. We have Brennan Park and we have Valley Cliff. And Sorka is not asking for any additional renumeration within the license renewal for Brennan Park, given that there was contribution made from, from the council last year towards the pending updates of that facility. In closing, Sorka feels with these changes, it, it is still the ideal partner to deliver this important public recreation amenity to the, the community. But without additional contribution from the district of Squamish, Sorka board would need to seriously consider its options moving forward for a long term strategy. And with that, I invite any questions.
Go ahead, councillor Stoner, followed by councillor French.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Low, for being here in the presentation and all the work that Sorka has been doing in our community. This question might be equally for staff as it is for you. We actually just wrapped up the majority of our budget discussions for 2023 this morning. And so I'm curious how long these conversations have been going on with staff and if they're considered in the current budget that we just reviewed or if this would be in addition to what we just spoke about.
I can answer the portion about, so February 23rd was the first time I came on board just at that time. And I noticed that the license was expiring and 23rd of, sorry, May 31st, as well as the Brennan Park had already expired. So started, started the very preliminary discussions about, about the renewal of both of these. And then as we got closer to that May 31st date, that's when we started to talk about the renewal. But I can't answer the second portion.
Yeah, sorry, guys. Take it away, Ms. Boxer.
Sorry, through the chair. Just consulting with staff, no, there isn't anything in the budget currently. This would be an additional ask at this point. And certainly if council would like to put this into the budget, we can be advised through a motion and bring it back on the tying it all together meeting if necessary.
Is it on this, on this topic, Mary, that I had councillor French next? Okay, on the list. Councillor French, go ahead.
Thanks, Chair. This conversation makes me feel really old. I'm one of the 23 people that way back in the early 1990s was behind the creation of Sorka. And the last time I visited this particular site was in the early construction of, of the jumps and berms. And I haven't been back since. So in the context of, of the ask, I'm curious about, if you could give us a little more information on, on the water that you talked about. Is that a district water line that's being tapped from?
Yeah, I don't know that the origins of that. I know it was one of the preliminary requests from Ron Goldstone, who was acting as an agent for Sorka when the initial request came in in 20 January 2017. And there is a water source that's actively used to help spray down the jumps in order to give the, the organic matters and substance and density.
Okay, and Chair have one more. Toilets and, and like rough facilities, what's there or, or not there? And could there potentially be a future ask for that if, if those facilities don't exist?
In the, in the current agreement, we have, we have the use of the facilities at Chances Casino as, as washroom. I've never heard any complaints from users about them needing to use that facility. And then we have a certain, I think it's 10 parking stalls at Chances Casino in the back of it, which is where the trail connects to, to the facility.
Excellent. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Elliott, and then councillor Penagill.
So just to get a sense of scale here, the presentation said we do garbage collection. We pay the insurance, we provide the water. So what's the total cost that, that we cover?
Who wants to take a stab at this one? I'm waiting for someone to pop up on screen, but I'm not seeing it. Go ahead, Ms. Glenda.
Thank you, through the chair. I don't know that we're prepared to answer that right now. But while we're discussing, we can see if someone can pull that up.
Thank you.
My other question, Mr. Low, is that you use trail passes and corporate sponsorships to maintain other aspects of mountain biking in the community? And has that been contemplated for here?
Yeah, so this, this is definitely falls somewhat within our core because it is such an important development site. We certainly see this as a community amenity that's on district land. Whereas the trails are all outside of district land, which requires an immense amount of support. So, and what we're asking for today does not cover all costs for this facility. So it really, it really be a, it would be a partnership. So, yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Penagill?
Yeah, just building on Mayor Elliott's question, I'd like to understand as well the, the incremental cost in this license agreement compared to the old one as, as well as understanding the sort of total ask that we've had before. But the other piece, it was mentioned that Chances Casino provides washrooms and parking as part of an agreement. I assume that's not part of our agreement. So I just want to understand how that is secured and the certainty of, of those facilities as, as part of this, if, if we move forward with a five year license.
I'd have to get back to you on the chances, the Chances Casino. I'm not crystal clear on that piece. As far as the insurance goes, the incremental insurance for the two jump parks is $4,000. So for the purposes of this exercise, it's assumed that it's going to be about 50 50 between the two. So that is remunerated at both facilities. So it is, it's $4,000 that district paid to Sorka for, for those insurance based on receipts and of which is approximately 50 50 for the two facilities.
With, seeing no other questions, I'll take a stab at a couple. Do we have any idea of the, the usage of this, of this facility as far as numbers go? I, I saw overall membership numbers for Sorka, but anything around the, the use of this facility daily or annually?
I, we don't have any trackers in there. It's, I, I think this, it's been a funny facility because we have relied on volunteers. So it has been kind of closed and opened at certain times over the last few years as well. But, but no, I don't know specific numbers. I've never been in there without seeing any other bodies, but I don't have any quantitative numbers.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you. And does this contemplate any, this is a made sort of a big chunk of work to get it up and running for the, for the spring. But is there anything that's yet to be done there or expansion of, of any sort that's sort of outside of this particular ask? Just to sort of provide some more context.
No direct expansion plans. There's certainly a, a few items of a risk concern with respect to cleaning out the jump lines, that there's no crossover between jump lines that would be invested into the 2023 rebuilds. We would project that 2023 rebuild would be substantially more than the $10,000. And the contribution from the district would be the 10 and then we would provide the rest of it. And then that would, that would kind of address the, the risk zones that we're aware of. Fortunately, there hasn't been any, any significant injuries on, at the facility. However, we think that there is still some ability to kind of clean up a few of the, the risk, notified risk areas.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Race. Oh, sorry, Ms. Glenda, did you have something to add in this?
Thank you. In terms of the information asked for before, Ms. Triplett is online to talk about the license. In terms of public works support that's currently provided, we'd have to come back with that, but can provide that number as part of the tying it all together with, with budget.
Thank you. So Mr. Mr. Foot. Sorry, Triplett. Sorry. A little lost in my screens here. Take it away, Mr. Foot. Although you're muted currently. And still, so maybe we can come back to, we'll give you one more, one more go. We're not, we're not getting any audio from you now. Mayor Elliott?
Mr. Low, when does our overall partnership agreement with Sorka need to be renewed?
Here on the fee for service agreement, that's, that's the implementation of a recreational trail and maintenance program is, is really at the crux of what that fee for services.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Nav. Nav, can we, do we have audio yet for you? Okay, I, if maybe someone can communicate there and see if we can get that going. But I'll go back to councillor, councillor Race and then I have councillor Penagill.
Thank you. And it's actually through to staff. And I'm just wondering, Ms. Boxer, if my calculation is that there's a $16,000 a year additional request here that's probably not included in the budget. And if council was inclined to agree to that, what might the funding options?
Yes, just, we'll just finish up this one line of questioning from councillor Race and I'll go back to you now. Thank you.
What might the funding options be?
Through the chair. Well, the, the primary funding option for, for an item like this would be taxation. We can certainly take a look to see if there is any other funding option. But that would be where something like this would be funded.
Okay. Ms. Triplett, take it away. Nav, can you, can you hear us on, on your end? We can't, we had it for a second, but you're not, we're not getting any audio. The floor is yours, Nav. Okay, I'm going to go to councillor Penagill and we'll try to loop back to this to get this, to get this answer. So councillor Penagill, don't buy us too much time, but we need a little bit of time.
Thank you, Mr. Low. I, I, I get that you haven't had specific usage counting yet. But do you have a sense, is this what you'd classify as a busy facility? Or you mentioned some challenges with volunteers and therefore keeping it open and closed is the vision that it would, with this funding, it would become a fully open, very busy facility? Or can you just speak to the, the, the current and future expectations of visitation?
Yes, so I would expect right now the visitation is very strong. And the reason is, is because it is such a wide range of cyclists can use this facility. Just to kind of paint a very broad, a very quick picture. So Saturday night, went in there to take some pictures for this. And there is a group of like 18 mostly Portuguese speaking riders that were obviously either living in town, very skilled jumpers with a bunch of smaller kids watching them on the pump track. We had a couple of preteens, one riding breaker on the side and then one guy giving a coaching lesson to his girlfriend that was like in their 20s. So because it, it is, it really does cover all spectrums of biking in this community. And you look at the walkability and the bikeability of this location. And especially now with Sea and Sky and then the, the, the connection to downtown. These are, this is where these kids and where people are going to be going in the future because it is so accessible and it's, it's not going to be competing for anything else because it's right under hydro lines. So we'd like to see it as a long term amenity for the community. It's just right now, we feel as if the partnership just, it, it isn't quite balanced. Because I think the first five years, there was some big efforts made to get the facility built. And then now it's just, okay, how are we going to do this on a long term relationship perspective?
I see councillor Stoner. Okay, Ms. Glenda, thank you.
Hi, thanks. We'll put Nav out of her pain. So she messaged me. And currently the district pays for the annual insurance, which is about $2,000 a year. And as mentioned, the public works staffing and any kind of materials involved in, in garbage pickup. But we can get that detail later.
Thank you. Councillor Stoner, are you pointing that out or are you on the list? Yeah, take it away.
Thank you, through the chair. I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of how we, how we address this. So as I mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, we're, we're, through our budget cycle, our staff have worked really hard to try and focus our 2023 budget. So, and prioritize the various demands that came through. And here we are at the 11th hour with, with a new ask. So I guess I'm just curious from your perspective, maybe what like the bare minimum is, is we're looking into 2023 and how we might be able to ramp that up? Or is this like a make or break $16,000 ask for the coming fiscal?
I'd suggest that the bare minimum is, is, is really the revamp of the facility. It, it does require some work. The, the facility itself is now four years old and it's dirt, so things do erode and change. So for, without getting approval from the board, my suggestion would be at a bare minimum. It's the, it's the top up amount, the 10,000 annual. And then maybe the, the monthly kicks in on year two. I don't know the mechanics of that from, from a council's perspective, but that would be my suggestion.
Appreciate that. And then a question for staff. This license agreement has been, is, I think, came to a term at the end of May. And so I'm just curious, was this contemplated in the 2023 budget and not prioritized? Or is it just something that is late to the budget cycle?
Thank you through the chair. Unfortunately, the timing was off slightly. So it's not that staff did not prioritize this. It's simply a timing issue. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure whether it was staff had seen it or not, or if it, okay, thank you.
Sorry, what was the answer to that question? Have staff seen this and reviewed it?
Staff are aware of the ask, but it, the timing of the ask meant that it was not part of the budget process. And so it's not that staff have made a decision one way or the other to prioritize it.
Councillor, any further questions on this before we consider any motions? Councillor Penagill?
So in, in prior years, we've had a bunch of discussions throughout the budget process, made some decisions. But as I recall, sort of at the, there's a final day where we kind of look at, okay, everything we've done, are we really sure? Was that what we just had, that discussion we just had? Or is that coming in the next, in the next month or two?
The final, through the chair, sorry. The final discussion is the tying it all together. And that's really the prior to three readings and adoption. And that's just before staff go to the public engagement process.
You good? Councillor Penagill? Mayor Elliott?
I'd like to move that this be referred to the next budget discussion and that staff bring back our recommendation. bring back a recommendation on possible funding options.
Okay, second by Counselor Stoner. Um, would you, anyone like to speak to it?
I have a really difficult time making budget decisions at the 11th hour, uh, especially after we do community, um, surveying and we've weighed all the pros and cons. So this will go to the next council and they can weigh this in line with the priorities of a budget that's already asking for over 5% revenue increase, uh, year over year. So it's a very tight budget and I don't feel like we should be forced to make that decision, uh, from a delegation, uh, at a, at a, at this meeting. So I think it requires deliberation. It requires looking at the whole package. And, and I would suggest, if I was at the table, I wouldn't be saying yes to it unless I could figure out a way to say no to something else. Cause we can't just keep expanding the budget. So, uh, I'd like to defer it to the next, uh, budget discussion.
Any other, uh, Counselor Peddingle?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with, with that assessment and, um, you know, some of the decisions we made earlier in terms of cost versus benefit to the community and saying no to this, but yes to some of the other things we talked about this morning doesn't sit quite well with me. I guess that'll be for the next council to dig into. But I think that still does need a bit more thought and, and discussion. And, and so I hope, um, this will be considered seriously by the, the, um, at the next budget meeting. Thank you.
Counselor French?
Thanks, Chair. And in, speaking in support of the motion, um, I think that this is the best way forward on this issue. It is to make sure that, uh, staff come back to us with, um, some more, uh, context in, in getting us to figuring out which way council will go on this. So I think this is the best course of action for the situation. Thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, just briefly, thanks again for coming today. And I think that this is the most prudent way forward for us, given where we're at in our budget discussions. You weren't here last year, Mr. Low, you weren't in this position yet, but we were in a similar position last year with the requests around Brennan Park, uh, and the Skills Park. And that part of that was a, a grant timing thing, but it was also an 11th hour request and we were able to use council contingent, contingency at the time, but it was also late in the budget process. And so, um, I'm cognizant of that. As my colleagues have just said, we've, we've put a lot of effort, staff put a lot of effort into balancing the priorities in this budget. So, um, I'm happy to refer this back to staff so that they can come back with, uh, with a recommendation for the future council to consider. I think that's the most balanced way to take this forward. But I want to thank you for your time and the work that you're doing on this project. It is an amazing community asset. Um, so thanks for that.
Go ahead, Counselor Race.
Thank you. Yeah. And I tend to agree with, with the direction this is going. Um, this is not a no. This is, uh, far from it, but I do think there is some consideration that should be given to this, uh, and the funding source, uh, in whole or in part, uh, if the next council is prepared to go ahead with that. The other thing that occurs to me, um, just in the conversation is, uh, we have an agreement with Sorka that expires, I think you said in 2024, if I'm not mistaken. And whether, um, it might be advantageous to both parties to wrap the, these two pump tracks, um, into that agreement or not. Uh, I don't know. Um, it just occurred to me in the middle of the discussion that maybe that's something that we could consider, between now and the time it comes back to council again, um, or even after that, but, uh, whether we try for a sort of a wider scope agreement, uh, with Sorka, uh, and look for that as a community partnering agreement, and this is part of it. So I'll leave that as an open thought, um, and, uh, and say it'll come back to the next council. There is a final moment, um, and whether or not there's a funding source that would be satisfactory to them. Thanks.
Thank you. The, I, yeah, so, uh, Mr. Low, the, when we're doing this, this part, we can't have any more information. So, um, I'm, I'm supportive of this, of this direction. I, I also think this is a, this facility is a tremendous return on investment, uh, that the community's made. And I think some investing in, uh, in the main, ongoing maintenance is, is appropriate. But how we get there is, is the question, uh, for me at, at this point, as, uh, we've been through some lengthy budget deliberations to, we'll need to find some, we'll need to find somewhere to, to make this happen. And that's, will take some, um, some deliberation to do that. I do think that in your presentation, I think you've, uh, understated the market value of this, uh, of this facility. It's, uh, an incredible facility that has been created, um, um, really from, from nothing, uh, and is on par or exceeds, uh, what other communities have had to spend, um, upwards of a million dollars to, uh, or more to, to achieve. So that's, um, this is a huge victory that it, that it exists and, uh, I look forward to, um, seeing, seeing it through with, uh, with the funding for ongoing maintenance, but, um, procedurally that'll take another touch yet, uh, which will happen at the next budget meeting. So with that, I'll call the question. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you. And counsel, we're either, depending on how we score this, we're either, uh, 10 minutes ahead of schedule for lunch or we're a whole subject, we're a whole hour behind in our meeting schedule. So let's do a quick poll of the room. Everyone's here for this one. So I'm feeling, yes, go ahead, Mary Elliott.
I just wanted to check with the C A O and which staff will lose if we don't do some of this now.
As much as I don't like to do a presentation when your tummies are empty, my preference would be to have the presentation happen now because all of the staff are here. Thanks.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that. And if you could, um, just as I read ahead in the agenda, if you could then, um, just let everyone know that we're, that we're bump, we're bumping late. So we can go on. So thank you so much. Should we do a quick, I'm going to do a, a quick three-minute recess to, so staff can get set up and we can get some fresh drinks or snacks. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back to our special meeting of the District of Squamish. We're on to item four one, the strategic and organizational plan update. With Ms. Glenda, so I'll let you take it away.
Uh, thank you, Chair. And through to counsel, this is an exciting presentation because it is our final update on the strategic plan and the organizational plan. So it is a summary of the last four years of work that, um, many of our staff, several of whom are sitting behind me to help present, participated in, in fact, the entire organization, frankly. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, thank you. Um, this of course is one of our, um, highlighted achievements. And this is a picture from the opening day of our brand new fire hall number one. What is stating the obvious, but important to repeat is that this is a very ambitious plan. Staff were very proud to work for a council that supported such a progressive and ambitious plan aligned with our official community plan. And right smack in the middle of it was a two-year pandemic that we are just emerging from. Despite that, the teams here at the district have produced an incredible amount of work. And in the subsequent presentations that you'll hear from staff, you'll see that, um, the, the fruits of that labor. Of course, as a result of the pandemic and nonetheless, it was a strategic, ambitious plan, there are some things that are still ongoing or not yet complete. Uh, I will also point out, so if you want to go to the next one, uh, this is the, um, cover of the current strategic plan. And what we have produced for you, you have it in hard copy. There we go. Is a fabulous, uh, collateral piece of the summary of the strategic plan for council and the community to, uh, peruse over and enjoy. So this is a great summary of all of the work, um, that staff have done. Uh, just as a reminder, we do have some trackers behind the scenes that cover all of the tactics that are related to the organizational plan and the strategic plan. In the interest of time, of course, for today, we are sticking with our previous, um, method of highlighting, uh, key accomplishments. Although today we'll cover key accomplishments for the four years, not just the last quarter, um, any delays or risks. And then of course, those projects that are ongoing for the rest of the year. And ideally we'll have some time for council to ask some questions. Uh, we've switched the order today. We're going to start with our organizational plan and wrap up with our strategic plan. So first up, we have, uh, Julie Bengi, our Director of Human Resources.
Good afternoon, um, Mayor and Council. So, um, yep, I am here to talk to you about our people started part of our strategy. Um, in looking at what we've, um, just sort of our current update highlights, um, we, I'm very pleased to say that we're finally back to full capacity with our HR staff. Uh, like every other workforce group, um, we, we endured a lot of turnover in the last sort of year, um, which, which was quite demanding in terms of, um, uh, staff that wasn't fully up to capacity, but trying to help a workforce come back to the workplace again. Uh, that being said, we have, um, in, um, the year to date, completed 130 recruitment competitions. If you, um, compare this to our, um, previous maximum number of competitions, um, completed during a year, which was 104, we are, we are doing a lot of work. Um, as you would note, uh, know, or, or have seen, um, in the broader community as well, workforce turnover is quite high. Coming out of a pandemic, when, uh, people saw different opportunities for work and how they did it, um, we see turnover in our own workforce. But we're also seeing, um, we're also seeing a very encouraging return of people to Squamish to work for the district, choosing to work and live, um, or live and work in the, in the community as well. Um, I've only been here in this position since March, but we have, um, completed a number of things. And there's a number of things that we will continue to do as we come out of, um, sort of the pandemic and those learnings and opportunities as well. Uh, we did complete I A F F bargaining. Um, we will go into Q P bargaining as well. One of the things that we are focusing on, as many organizations are focusing on, is our, um, our succession planning and our development of our staff members. Now more than ever, um, the, the people that we have working for us, um, we need to invest in them and their future and their future with us as well. So we have, um, we will be rolling out a succession planning project, um, and revise career conversations as well. And to support that and to get a better understanding of what our employees want and need coming out of a pandemic in a very changed world. We're also going to be rolling out a survey focusing on engagement, learning and development as well. That should be out this week. What else? Uh, our respectful workplace policy that you saw, um, and approved has been, uh, rolled out and our first in-person training takes place tomorrow. Um, we've also, um, we've also re-reviewed our remote work policy, um, and it's in a process of revision and, um, rolling out as well. So that's sort of the last, um, yeah, that's the last little update, uh, 2018, this should be 2019 to 2022. Um, I can speak to what I have seen as coming out of this. I can't speak to how it unfolded. So, um, if you have questions, um, perhaps to the other people in the room. But, um, yes, 2019 to 2022 saw, um, everyone experience, um, a period in time that they'd ever seen before. So, uh, there were a number of things that HR achieved during that time and, but one of the biggest achievements, I think, um, or I believe is spearheading the COVID response. So including the development, um, of the exposure control program, the likes of which no one had ever seen before. Our redeployment project, program to making sure that we still manage to, um, retain our staff members during the pandemic. And then our remote work policy, um, and our employee transition back to the office, all of which were massive changes to our workforce. Um, and the HR team, um, supported throughout as well. In the midst of all of that, um, we did earn an R F P for and successfully transferred to a new benefits provider. Um, and introduction of new providers for enhanced disability support as well. Um, in addition to that, um, we're also looking at, um, we're looking at our E F A T program and what that will look going forward as well. Recruitment, we still had to recruit during this time as well. It slowed down, um, obviously during the pandemic months. Definitely picked up afterwards, but throughout this period of time, we completed 433 recruitment competitions. And one of the, I think the, the, the greatest achievements of any, um, uh, you know, of any HR team during, um, the pandemic was still the, the development and the ongoing effective and supportive relationship with both of, uh, the unions, um, and the role over the contracts during the pandemic as well. Between 18, oh, 19 and now, we've launched a new payroll system, um, which included district, uh, district or district training program. We, um, rolled out a workforce capacity review and development of a strategic workforce plan. Also, we did an employment engagement survey and implementation of the recommendations from that, and also revised the district-wide Josh structure as well. Um, as we grow and change and our workforce grows and changes, um, making sure that we're still meeting the needs in terms of the safety of, um, all of our employees. Just called for a restructure of that as well. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Conrad Kurdel, Director of I T. So we've, uh, yeah, we're coming to the end of our technology transformation program. Uh, there's been some major accomplishments and milestones in this council's term. Uh, we went live with our new unit for Business World Finance System with Core Financials. We went live with payroll and time sheets, moved from paper to electronic time sheets, which was a huge change for the organization. Uh, we, uh, went live with permitting and business licenses in our new development, development management system, Tempest. And we rolled out Perfect Mind, our new recreation management system that also has an online, uh, platform for the public to engage. As well, there was a number of early quick wins. These were systems that weren't, uh, didn't need to tie into our finance system and, and didn't require a lot of integrations. Uh, so our fleet system, uh, we did a major upgrade for our fire system, uh, our emergency public notification system and our open data portal. Behind the scenes, there was a lot of other work happening. We basically completely overhauled all of our infrastructure and, and technology. You know, we moved to a high-speed fiber network with a few sites now actually connected by our own dark fiber, uh, that we installed with, with our engineering team. Uh, we continued to upgrade our virtual server technology, uh, while also moving to cloud services. We've, uh, like everyone else, had to do a major pivot with COVID overnight, uh, really supporting work from home, uh, within a couple of days. within a couple of days and and moving to virtual meetings, completely changing how we do council meetings and and moving to virtual meetings for the organization. We had many challenges thrown to us, not just on the, on the IT operations side, but also on the TTP project side. And so I won't get into them all, but I would say I'm going to stick with that slide for a minute. I'm going to say the biggest challenge was just resourcing correctly on both sides, operating and the project side. And there's, in many cases, it's the same resources doing both, both work, both projects. And and that's, that's been very challenging. And and part of that is also backfilling. It sounds easy on paper. It's quite challenging to backfill positions, to find the right resources, train them and have them up to speed where they're effective. Huge kudos to the tech team, by the way, on getting all of that infrastructure and security work done. I should mention security. We have all new firewalls, you know, new two-factor authentication processes. We have new VPNs, a lot of technology on the backend that is making us more secure. That's enabling us to to handle, you know, the growing demands of IT. Staff training is part of that as well for security. I'm ready to move. So some highlights, some stuff that's happening now still with TTP work in progress. We're implementing Tempest property taxes and utilities, our billing system in Tempest. We're also moving forward with the My City Portal for coming online services for business licenses, permitting, and eventually tax and utilities as well, as well as some other services. We're excited about our new budgeting software. It's a modern system to replace a number of tools we're currently using, integrates with our finance system, provides dashboards and up-to-date info for managers and decision-makers. Also includes a potential future public portal there. So that's, that's something else that's in the works with the budget tool. Next slide. So like I said, we're coming to the completion of the TTP. We will be implementing the remaining Tempest modules next year. That includes things like dog licenses and ticketing, online payments. We do need to get to a point where we can turn off our old end-of-life May system. So that's the goal for next year. I would say the core platforms are in place now. We've done a lot of heavy lifting with TTP. The major billing blocks are in. Already mentioned these, but you know, the finance system and development management system, but also our document management system, SharePoint Online, our modern GIS system, our new rec system. Those are our building blocks. These can handle many of our business needs and help provide online services to the public. So there's an incredible amount of value for the organization coming out of this. The systems are integrated, reducing department silos. We have reliable data. This is leading to better decision-making, transparency and security. And we have better, faster service in person and online to keep up with the growing demand. So these are modern, secure and reliable systems that are available 24/7 with with very little downtime. We are transitioning to IT operations, so moving to a new mode. These will be ongoing activities, but we need to ensure that we continue to get value from this investment. Like I said, the core functionality is in, but there's a lot more that needs to be added. There's more modules, add-ons and integrations needed in the future. And we'll continue to make improvements and a review and fix issues as they come up. We also have ongoing upgrades and security improvements with with all of these systems. To support that, there's a new structure in IT to support this. So we do have the applications team now, which is led by a dedicated manager. We need to continue to grow that team, support them. We need to become more self-reliant and less reliant on consultants. Future projects, there's other projects being planned. We we're tackling those individually. Some TT, TTP projects did not get done. And so obviously, there's still work to be done. We do have a draft business systems plan that's been shared with CLT. But the approach is one project at a time. Let's not try and do them all at once in a, in a program, ambitious program like we we've just, we're coming to the end of now. We do recognize the need for an asset and work management system. And so we are planning a pilot there with our existing GIS system. So again, we potentially have the building block already, which is, which is kind of cool. We don't need to necessarily go back out and and purchase a new solution. So the work doesn't stop. We'll continue to implement solutions. The major building blocks are in and and we'll, we'll maintain them and support them. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, David Rolson, Manager of Municipal Infrastructure. So one of the goals in the organizational plan under the stewardship area was to complete a Phase One Stormwater Management Plan. Which I please report has been completed. So in 2019, council endorsed the Phase One Integrated Stormwater Management Plan that took a district-wide asset management-based review of the district stormwater assets. So that plan compiled an inventory and answered some really key questions like, what level of funding do we need for our stormwater assets? What are our level of service goals? And it also inventoried our drainage-related natural assets. So that plan also provided recommendations for further detailed catchment-based integrated stormwater management plans in order to evaluate drainage capacity as well as water quality within specific catchments. So earlier this year, council endorsed the district's first catchment-based integrated stormwater management plan for the How Sound and Stewamis River watersheds. So that's all developed areas south of the Mamquam River within the community. And that evaluated drainage capacity under both existing and future development and climate change scenarios. And it also completed water quality testing that will set a baseline for us to be able to monitor and track changes in in our water quality over time. So the plan provided detailed recommendations to follow in order to provide a strong level of flood protection as well as environmental stewardship. We've applied for a grant to complete the next catchment-based integrated stormwater management plan that will cover Brackendale and Garibaldi Estates. And we're awaiting confirmation of that grant, but we'll plan to kick that project off later this year or early next. Next slide, please. Earlier this year, council endorsed the Asset Management Plan update and as well as the district's first natural asset management strategy. So the Asset Management Plan addressed the key questions of what assets does the district own? How much are they worth? When do they need to be replaced? And how much do we need to invest in them? It also included recommendations for near and long-term funding requirements in order to manage the assets over time. So some of the key highlights of that plan are that it included all of the district's natural assets. So that are assets, it included assets that weren't included in the district's first asset management plan from 2010. And the the plan showed that we have a total asset value of $883 million, which is equivalent to about forty-three or so $42,000 per person in the community. The Natural Asset Management Strategy completed a full inventory of the district's natural assets that provide municipal services. So this includes things like creeks, the estuary, forests, rivers, wetlands and aquifers that provide municipal services, things like stormwater treatment and retention, drinking water, flood protection, as well as a receiving body for our treated wastewater. The plan identified the district's natural asset inventory is valued at $1.6 billion and provided recommendations to protect and preserve those natural assets to ensure that they continue providing those services and also reduce the district's costs for asset management. That's it for me. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Dan Griffin. I'm the manager, manager of GIS and data services at the district. I'm talking about our open data program. So in March of 2021, council endorsed our open data guiding principles. The principles were in support of our program goals of data transparency, realizing the commercial and social value of data at the district, improve public participation and engagement. And this is all done by making data freely available with as few restrictions as possible while protecting privacy of certain data sets, of course. The data is provided quickly. It's provided in a complete way and in formats that are usable across various systems. And there's always a goal of securing and protecting data as well. So our, our open data portal, data.squamish.ca provides a number of self-serve features for staff and the public. Got over 3,000 unique visitors from this time last year with over 16,000 page views. So it's, it's being actively used on a daily basis to support business activities at the district and by external agencies and and commercial businesses as well. Our focus in 2022 was really on system architecture. And as Connor mentioned, the platform when it was first set up in 2017 was very much standalone. So we're working on integration. And this includes integration with our newly implemented TTP systems for development management. We built some public-facing dashboards for business licensing and building permits. And those are populated through automation, pulling data directly out of those databases. For, for 2023, we're focused on those continued improved system improvements, building a new enterprise platform for our staff, revamping our open data portal and integration with our community indicators dashboard as well. So bringing that in-stream with with this overall platform. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Asia Peterson, Projects and Research Coordinator. So under the Building Bridges pillar, staff and council have continued to demonstrate their commitment to reconciliation through ongoing learning and collaborative projects. We've continued to offer workshops that support staff to better understand the legacy of colonization, as well as we've offered cultural learning opportunities. We continue to share resources with staff and encourage self-guided learning as well. For example, we'll be hosting a self-guided learning tour this week in recognition of National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. With regard to relationship building, you'll recall that in June, council met with Squamish Nations Council to strengthen relationships and set priorities for collaboration. Some of the priorities included health services advocacy, new protocol development between the two councils and forestry policies. And I'll turn it over to David again to highlight some of the amazing collaborative projects between the district and Squamish Nation that have been done in the spirit of collaboration.
Thanks, Asia. So building on what Asia just spoke about, one of the ways that we're working on reconciliation with Squamish Nation is through engineering projects that have the potential to mitigate some of the impacts of of past decisions and actions. The district has been engaging with Squamish Nation on flood protection projects for several years. And we've built excellent relationships with Squamish Nation staff through that work. Through our engagement, the Squamish Nation identified that the construction of the the Squamish River Dyke isolated Jimmy Jimmy Judd slough from the Squamish River, which has led to a degradation of water quality and salmon spawning habitat within the area. So through collaboration with Squamish Nation, the district was able to secure a $1.8 million grant in order to build a culvert as well as some control gates. They'll provide a connection and a source of fresh water into the slough in order to enhance water quality. Construction is basically complete for that. We're just awaiting arrival of a generator and we plan to commission that project this fall. Next. Another important project is the Eagle Viewing Area and CHM Reserve Dyke Planning. The CHM Reserve was originally 68 acres when it was originally surveyed in 1881. And current mapping shows that that reserve has been reduced down to just under 10 acres. And that's due to erosion by the Squamish River. So and in addition to that, the Squamish River Dyke runs through the CHM Reserve without land tenure. So we've been working with, in partnership with Squamish Nation since 2019 to develop plans for upgrading the dyke at the Eagle Viewing Area and the CHM Reserve. That included preparation of a dyke master plan in 2019, which included an important recommendation to realign the dyke at the reserve in order to recover lost historic reserve land. And that's shown on this slide here. Both Squamish Nation and district councils adopted that dyke master plan in 2019. And through partnership with Squamish Nation, we've been able to secure additional grant money for a seismic assessment as well as an environmental impact assessment for that project. So our partnership is continuing and we're continuing to advance the design and assessments that so that we'll be ready to apply for further grant funding in the future when we're ready for construction. Thank you.
Thank you to the staff that presented on the organizational plan. We'll now transition into a summary of the strategic plan work, starting with Mr. Picketts.
Thank you very much. My name's Ian Picketts. I'm the manager of Sustainability and Climate Change here at the district. So this presentation is organized into three slides. First, we will go over actions that have completed, we have completed. Secondly, we will talk about actions that we have initiated but are ongoing or not yet complete. And finally, we will highlight some actions that we were not able to complete over the last four years. So the colored bullets on each of these slides correlate to actions related to waste, related to transportations and related to buildings, with the ones with the black bullets being broader organizational actions. So on this slide, it's worth, it's worth noting first and foremost that three years ago, we did not have the C cap. And so we have created the plan and have made measurable progress in implementing it. To date, we have made notable progress toward completion on 91 of the 122 actions within the plan. Second, second action worth noting is our landfill gas collection system, which was commissioned in December 2021. Of all of the actions in the C cap, this is by far the one with the biggest potential for greenhouse gas reductions. Another major accomplishment is our deconstruction bylaw. So this bylaw is very innovative as our staff recommend that it be focused on volume and not weight. And this is in order so that it appropriately incentivizes wood recycling. We have adopted the Transit Future Action Plan, which commits us to approximately doubling, doubling service hours through the implementation of the plan. Also, we have many active transportation upgrades, some of which we looked at last week in the council bike tour. Big improvements include Mamquam Road West, Pemberton Ave and the lighting of Corridor Trail. Also, on the heels of the C cap, we adopted the Municipal Energy Emissions Plan, or MEAP, in 2021 and have already been able to allocate several significant resources into implementation. And finally, a large accomplishment is the low-carbon zoning incentive. And it's a great example of the district being bold in taking local leadership. And this was spearheaded by our planning department. So now we will move on to actions that we have initiated, but that will continue. So one piece of work that is, that is never going to be done is our communications. We put a lot of resources and effort into our website, also presentations and podcasts. And website, website updates are underway at the end of this year. The return of in-person zero-waste events and circular economy events has been very, very exciting. The photo on the top left depicts the almost terrifyingly successful nature of our Reuse It Fair. We were absolutely overwhelmed with material and people. And a huge proportion of that was able to to find a new home. On the bottom left is our recycle bicycle event. And this was a really excellent collaboration with Under One Roof and the Rotary Club. We do have funding secured for our EV charging stations. I know this was a series of TBD updates throughout the last three years, largely related to the significantly delayed nature of the funding announcement. But we have the funding secured and we will be constructing our EV charging stations. And finally, another initiative that is underway is our retrofit assist concierge service. We talked about this earlier today. We are working to increase We are working to increase the number of retrofits that we support. So currently, it's limited to heat pumps, but we're looking towards fenestration and building envelope updates in two thousand and twenty-three. Next slide, please. Okay, so there are many initiatives that is worth highlighting that we have not completed. One thing of note is that our deconstruction in single-use items reduction bylaw outreach has been delayed on both of these. We are currently finalizing our retailer toolkits, and we will be visiting more construction sites this fall. Regional transit is another action where progress has been slow. We will continue working with other partners, including BC Government toward this. And finally, we did not move forward with the core transit zoning incentive, and planning has focused more on neighborhood level planning to date. Thank you very much, and I'll hand it to our next presenter.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I can Gary Buxton, one of the general managers here at the district and largely responsible for the housing portfolio over the last few years. So in terms of affordable housing initiatives, we were targeting one hundred and twenty-five purpose-built rental units, affordable rental units. We've got close. Spirit Creek, which we started and have subsequently passed to our partners at Cedar Sky Community Services, that's approaching completion within the next few months, so that'll give us seventy-six affordable rental housing units. The Housing Society, Squamish Community Housing Society, which we've been planning for a number of years. It's been a slow process, but it is officially registered and it's operational. Board meetings are in place, staff are in place, so its work is slowly starting. Thinking back over council's term, if we look at it if we look at it from a weasely point of view, we actually met the hundred and seventy-six at one point through the Temporary Modular Housing Units, the Bridge to Housing Project that we that we put together with a number of partners, Squamish Helping Hands and BC Housing in two thousand and twenty. It was a temporary modular unit, so that did assist in bridging a number of critical housing needs until the bridge to the Under One Roof project opened. It was a temporary solution, always intended to be. And so we've facilitated through land leases or zero-cost land leases or CAC contributions, particularly to the Under One Roof project, the West Winds project, and of course, the Spirit Creek project. So we've been facilitating a number of partners in adding to the affordable housing stock in the community. In terms of ongoing work, we are working with provincial partners for an additional affordable housing project. We were hoping we could meet that target. We have not been able to do. Obviously, the province is adjusting or taking a bit of a slow approach to its new projects in the last few years. So we're hoping that we can get that started in two thousand and twenty-three. Housing Society Construction or New Development Projects are two thousand and twenty-three or two thousand and twenty-four. Hope if they can get themselves organized and source some land and funding, they can certainly get those projects started in subsequent years. Now, see, we do have potential future housing as part of the Tantalus Fire Hall project. We are trying to in or sort of include affordable housing components in our new facility construction. We do need the funding, that is problematic, but we are designing that project so that if we don't do it now, we can do it in the future. So we are sort of trying to maintain that airspace potential through new facility construction, and we'll continue to do that as best we can. And in terms of ongoing work through the Community Housing Society, the coordinated access and waitlist will be one of their first to-do lists through the latter part of this year and into two thousand and twenty-three. Now, considering that this isn't the way that we that we have chosen to count units in the in the strategic plan, that one-twenty-five was a very particular way of accounting for it. I acknowledge that, but looking at if we look at all of the actions that council has taken in terms of CAC contributions, zoning requirements, and units that we've managed to produce through housing agreements. So currently, under construction, we actually have one hundred and forty-one affordable housing units. Yes, half of that is Spirit Creek, the other half is not. So there are affordable housing units that we do have, that we will not own, the society will not own, the district will not own. But they are under construction, and there are two hundred and seventy-one new market rental homes. Now, are they truly affordable? I would be the first to say no, but do they help in ameliorating rent increases? Yes, so we've got two hundred and seventy-one of those under construction. So, yes, we did not choose to to count the assembly of affordable units in this way, but council's had an impact through a number of decisions that it's made, and I think will continue to benefit the community. Thank you. Yes.
Good afternoon, council. I am Kate Mulligan, Economic Development Officer for the district. And I'm just going to cover off some of the accomplishments that our team, in collaboration with district partners and other departments, have undertaken in the last four years. So over the course of two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-one, economic development undertook a series of research to better understand the supply and demand for employment space throughout the district and assess business space needs and the financial viability of developing employment space. And that was in an effort to support effective policy and employment space development. Four employment space products were developed in collaboration with planning and the district's GIS Open Data Department, which included in-depth engagement with more than sixty businesses to understand their preferences in relation to employment, land, and space. The completion of four development scenarios to assess the financial viability of different forms of development within the district, as well as the completion of an inventory of employment, land, and space, as well as scenario development to model the implication of various demand scenarios on employment space. This work fed into two thousand and twenty zoning bylaw updates undertaken by planning for the Business Park and continues to support planning's understanding of employment space when developing policy, when working with the development community as part of the development process. We'll also be bringing a final report to council this month entitled Employment Space Guiding Principles, which will support employment land use decisions and the development process moving forward for the district. We will also be advancing Model two-point-O, which is currently in its beta form, which will aid as a tool for land use and neighborhood planning, as well as continue to develop our asset-sharing tool, which considers space needs throughout the district for priority sectors. The economic development team also undertook the development of an emerging sector roadmap and action plan meant to propel emerging sectors of our economy, the green economy and outdoor recreation. Equipped with this plan, the district formed two strategic advisory groups meant to inform the district's strategy in relation to these two emerging areas of our economy, while also supporting business retention and expansion efforts among our core and enabling sectors. The implementation of the plan is currently underway. Recent projects completed as part of this plan include the Emerging Sector Series, which were meant to uncover opportunities for emerging sector development. Investsquamish.ca, it's a new comprehensive website to showcase emerging areas of our economy and support local business with the resources they need to scale, as well as two impact studies to understand the importance of these sectors and provide forward-looking recommendations on their development. Economic Development, in partnership with the Sustainability Team, launched the Circular Economy Roadmap to fifty-plus attendees in late fall two thousand and twenty-one. And this roadmap provides direction on the establishment of a circular economy in Squamish, which moves away from a linear take-make-and-throw-away economy to one that reduces inputs and eliminates waste from business processes. The district intends to continue its implementation of the roadmap in two thousand and twenty-three, which will include the implementation of a communication strategy aimed at demonstrating the benefits of circularity and shifting behaviors. And then finally, the Economic Development Department worked collaboratively across the district with a host of organizations to provide programming and supportive business retention and expansion from its Here for Squamish campaign during the COVID-nineteen pandemic to its partnership to deliver the Business Resiliency Program and business support programs, such as the successful Squamish Chamber Grant Writing Program, which has supported total funding of six hundred thousand to more than sixty businesses within the district. Thanks very much.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Jonas Valanischka, Director of Community Planning. And today I will be presenting Neighborhood Connectivity Pillar. So under this pillar, what it centers around is connecting our community through places, programs, neighborhoods. In terms of gathering spaces, we have much to celebrate. The strategic plan aimed at increasing gathering spaces, parks in our residential neighborhoods and downtown. So currently, we have seven or we have six parks and gathering spaces that have either been completed or are underway, and one that is waiting approvals. So Denville Park, University Heights Park, the waterfront walkway along the Sirocco Development have all been completed. The oceanfront Spockus Feather Park, the North Park at Waterfront Landing or Sea and Sky, as well as the Garbaldi Springs Park are all underway and are in various stages of construction. And of course, we're still waiting for approvals from senior levels of government for the Unai Oak Park improvements, which are scheduled for next year. In terms of increasing the utilization of multipurpose space, we've worked with our Squamish to to produce and complete a survey on public space utilization to find out where we should be making investments and putting our efforts in in terms of improving public space. In addition to that, we have launched two other projects, so the Downtown Streetscape Standards Project, as well as the View Study Project Downtown, are both aiming at improving the quality of public space and gathering places. In terms of connecting our community through neighborhoods, the strategic plan aimed at completing two neighborhood plans in the district. So we've got one plan completed for Loggers East. These plans take significant effort in terms of public engagement with the community. And of course, we've had to pivot quite a bit, as everybody else with the pandemic. So the Garbaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan is currently underway. It will not be completed this year, but it will be, we're aiming to complete it next year. In addition to the pandemic happening in the middle of it all, we've also had to finish the Neighborhood Plan in Loggers East, and we've had some significant updates that were underway with our zoning bylaw, which are all complete. So all of that had an impact on the timing and the progress of the Garbaldi Estates Neighborhood Plan. Next slide, please. And I will turn it over to Cal.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Cal Bragg. I'm the Director of Facilities Planning and Construction. The accomplishments on the facility side, we've had, there's a mandate to have three shovel-ready projects for two thousand and twenty-two. We've done that, and then also the mandate was to chase funding, and particularly focused on grants. And the main one that was successful was the one for Brennan Park Recreation Center. So the completion of Fire Hall number one, which was on time, on budget, that was handed out over in July this year. We've also immediately started Fire Hall number two, which includes the Temporary Fire Hall. The Temporary Fire Hall is basically, it's very close to being completed. And we're well underway to have construction start this year for Fire Hall number two. The start of the Public Works Facility, we had a bit of a delay with the AAP process. We do have works at the moment, the salt sheds are complete, and preload is happening currently. And then also from the grant side, which was a win from funding, it was sixteen-point-three-million-dollar project size with eleven-point-seven million dollars being grant-funded for Brennan Park. And what that does is allows us to form projects around that, because there's obviously a lot of work to do at Brennan Park, and it creates a roadmap for us. So, you know, it's been a busy couple of years, and this is just over seventy million dollars of the work that's either been complete or underway or moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you for that, to the team, for wrapping up the strategic and organizational plan. I will not read this slide, but for council's benefit and the community throughout council's term, twenty-two bylaws were adopted, and depending on the bylaw, council and community can appreciate just how much work goes into each one of those. Policies, updated or created eighteen new policies. And finally, plans, master plans and strategies, which again are substantial lifts for staff and for council to endorse. We've covered ten of those in council's term. So thank you very much, and we'll remain open to questions.
Thank you. Quite the presentation. Council, questions? As for Penningill.
Yeah, it is sort of mind-boggling, the amount of work we've done with the pandemic. So just to really appreciate the recap of how much actually has been accomplished. One thing I just wanted to check on, I believe earlier in our term, we did take advantage of the new rental zoning abilities from the province. And I assume that's not counted in the two hundred and seventy-one rental units, but I just want to confirm those units which we have now secured for the long term through the rental zoning. Do we have an order of magnitude about how many of those are, or just confirming that those aren't included in the two hundred and seventy-one?
So through the chair, I can, they are not included in the two seventy-one, but Jonas may have a number. Do you know how many were captured by the rental zoning in terms of protection? How many numbers?
Not off the top of my head. Sorry, that is something that we knew, and if I had the report in front of me, I would be able to tell you. But I think it's probably less than a hundred. So it was all the existing units, so any building that had six or more purpose-built rental units in it. And by that, I mean they weren't stratified. Those became protected by this, by the zoning bylaw.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions? Was it Council French?
Thanks, Chair. This takes us back to a conversation earlier today about neighborhood planning. I want to revisit what Council Penningill had probed earlier in this context. So Loggers East took longer than expected, Garbaldi Estates is dragging out longer than we had originally planned. I'd love to hear thoughts from staff. Should we reassess our timing expectations with these plans? Or have we learned through all of this how to compact these processes into a one-year timeframe?
So I think both Mr. Valanischka and I will have a crack at this. The answer to your first question, I think, is yes, we do need to revisit them. In terms of how Jonas has done that, I'm not sure. In terms of can we compress them with difficulty, yes. You've got to throw a lot of resources to make these things move very quickly, but... So I'm not quite sure how Jonas, you've planned the departmental work.
Just to echo what Gary said, we've definitely learned that they take longer than a year. We have done some that are that, you know, we did a micro-plan for Wilson Crescent, and I believe that was under a year. But full neighborhood plans definitely are taking longer. I think even if more resources were thrown at it, it would still take more than a year, just because the engagement, you know, you have to cycle through engagement, cycle through council comments, and that takes a while, and then the staff resources.
Great. Thanks, Chair. And I'll just add that I've been packing around for four years now. It's very dog-eared, and it's worn, and I like to have it on hand to remind me what our priorities are. So to see this updated version of the presentation we just got warms my heart. I think we're a humble bunch, and we don't necessarily go out of our way to let people know about the accomplishments we've made over the last four years in this document. And this document does a great job of that. So thank you, staff, for your work in supporting our priorities as a council group.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson, followed by Mayor Elliott.
I would like to first echo the comments of my colleague, Counselor French, regarding this document, this updated document. And is this a splendid item? If it weren't election season, I'd be asking for a box of copies so that I could distribute around town and discuss them. Well done. It's a very good, in detail, a very good thoughtful presentation. My question concerns one of the items under Ongoing Priority Highlights, and that is the Marine Action Strategy Implementation. Now, the Marine Action Strategy was endorsed by the previous council. And this council received a presentation from the Planning Department in July 2019, which was really our only opportunity to discuss the implementation strategy. And that discussion focused mostly on where the zoning fit together with other zoning bylaw amendment initiatives. My question is, given that we have four focus areas in the Marine Action Strategy, Area One is Governance and Shared Leadership, Number Two Conservation, Three Economic Development, and Four Marine Gateway. What is proposed in the present proposed budget is attention to Marine Impact Study. However, that is for 2024. We do understand that there'll be some reporting done on the access strategy this year by the end of the year and some implementation next year. So my question, what else are we planning to undertake in 2023 towards the implementation of the Marine Action Strategy? And I'll give special emphasis on my curiosity about what are we going to do with the shared leadership and governance focus area? Anything that we're planning on undertaking there during 2023?
So before we'll get us I'll entertain a staff reply here, but Counselor Anderson, this is maybe more of a budget question rather than the the report on the achievements thus far with the our strategic plan. So I'll entertain a response here, but just we don't want to go too far down down this road. I think that's a discussion for another day, although important. But so go ahead.
Thank you. So in terms of what we're the kind of short-term objectives of implementation of the strategy, there's a few things. There's access, as you mentioned. Zoning was something that we've just finished and dredging is the third one. So we're moving along the implementation portion of that strategy, kind of one or two projects at a time.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Elliott.
I have a question for Mr. Pickett. In your report, it was under the section Maintain Organizational Carbon Neutrality while creating and implementing a plan to reduce the district's purchase offsets. We talk about one of the challenges being limited funding to support electrical capacity upgrades for retrofits. We might also see this eventually in strata corporations that are trying to introduce electric charging into the strata. So is I guess I'm wondering is, are you starting to see the provincial federal government pay attention to this area? Or is this an area where councils should perhaps be creating a resolution for next year to bring forward to to advocate for making sure BC Hydro is making the investments in communities so that we can meet our community climate action plans?
Through the chair, that's an excellent point. I absolutely short answer is I absolutely agree that this has to become a bigger priority. This is kind of an elephant in the room and it is really holding back a lot of electrical upgrades and movement toward electrification. As Counselor Heford has alerted me to in the past, we are actually seeing a few disparate examples of buildings that were not previously did not have gas connections getting gas connections, ironically enough, to enable electrical capacity for things like charging. So these are kind of steps in another direction that we that we don't want to see. One one key action, though, that we are working toward incentivizing and we're a little plug, we're going to have a webinar in October for is electric readiness plans for multi-unit residences. So what that does is it provides kind of a top-down plan, which can allocate the electricity a lot more efficiently. And so in the end, you can have more electrification, more units for EVs without as much as of a large upgrade. So there are some other actions we can take to manage the electricity we have better, but absolutely advocacy on this front is important. Thank you.
Can I move that staff add this item to the LMLGA and UBCM Resolutions Discussion in 2023?
Yep, move by Mayor Elliott. I'll second that. Any discussion? Go ahead, Counsel Penningill.
Yeah, I was at the Climate Leaders Institute Conference earlier in the year and there's a BC Hydro rep present. I was able to talk to her about this this very situation. And the fact that Ford was trying to leverage this as an excuse to get more gas into buildings was seemed like a real surprise to her. So definitely agree that we need to be pushing in more advocacy, but I think BC Hydro is starting to become aware of this and hopefully will be very since I got very receptive to addressing this in partnership with us.
Thank you. See no further comments. I'll call the question. All in favor or any opposed? Sorry, only any opposed is all I called there. Everyone was in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, more questions, comments here? Go ahead, Mayor Elliott.
I just want to let staff know that I had like a mental standing ovation like that whole time. So even though I'm not allowed to clap at council meetings or make a scene, there was a lot going on in my head. So thank you.
Counselor Stoner.
Yeah, double on the mental clapping over here. Just a huge thanks to staff for all of the heavy lifting to get us so far on this strategic plan. I also want to thank my colleagues for really drilling down at the beginning of our term to establish really clear direction, which I think helped guide us all in the right keep us going in the same same direction over the last four years. It's really amazing how much has been accomplished with two years of pandemic thrown in there. And so hats off to the group and everybody that you represent behind each one of these people sitting in these chairs. Just a huge thanks for all the work.
Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, I would like to reiterate that in some comments I've made in the past. When I'm at conferences, I always see Squamish getting recognized for the work we're doing, the inspiration we're providing other communities, our staff, our mayor are often on panels to help other communities learn how they can do better. I think as a community, I would classify us as an A-type personality community because we're always pushing for more, trying to do better. Sometimes unfortunately, that gets us caught up in discussions about things that we need to improve, that we need to do better. And you can misinterpret that as if there things are not great here. But when you take a step back, everyone wants to be here and that's where some of our challenges come from. So we've been so successful, it actually creates some some new challenges. But but I think we also need to recognize how that that success and that desire to be here is because we've done such a fantastic job. And so kudos to staff for the work that's been done over the last four years. With a pandemic, a global pandemic, no less, it makes me very, very proud to be part of this organization and part of this community. And so, yeah, this this document really highlights how great things are here. And absolutely, we we need to improve on things. This is proof, though, how far we can go. And so thank you so much to everyone.
Thank you. Counselor, I miss any hands before I take a stab at myself. Thank you to thank you to staff for facilitating the in the beginning, the strategic planning session that led to the focus that further on led to the outcome here of the and it's it's been incredible to be to be a part of it. And I know that at every step along the way, there's always there's always more to do. There'll be still more to do when all of us are are all are all gone. So it's important with what we do with our time. And I really appreciate the focus of this of this council and of staff to be able to execute that. So thank you so much. Any further questions before we've was there a motion attached to this? Receive, I guess, a motion to receive. Everybody wants to do that. I think it was Counselor Counselor French and then seconded by Counselor Stoner. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. And counsel, I think we'll this is a lunch break. We're going to move to lunch at this point. So we'll recess for lunch and we'll be back in 45 minutes. I think is the time we had allotted for lunch. So we'll see you back in 45 minutes. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back to the Special Business Meeting of the District of Squamish on September 27, 2022. We are now on to item four, two, Portally Financial Report. And I see Mr. Russell's here to present to us. So I'll turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of council. My name is Roland Russell. I'm Senior Financial Analyst. The Squamish and with me today this afternoon is Heather Boxrude, our CFO. I'm going to present some commentary on our Q2 financial report. And let's get started, I guess. Like to do one of these. First things first, we're pretty much on target. You know, we our tax take was what we anticipated. You know, we we generated the amount we anticipated for utility revenues, you know, which could build at the same time, all of which is good. There are some timing differences, you know, related to some of our expenditures, such as, you know, our CMP contract and timing for them to send the invoicing to us, things like that. But those tend to work out over the year because we know that we have to pay them. So it's just a matter of time. Probably the big item that jumps out in in our analysis at Q2 is that we are $1 million over budget in building permit revenue. And that says of June. So our budget was $1.5 million and our utility, sorry, our building permit revenue by June was just over 2.5 million. So we're a million to the good. That's wonderful because that's going to go directly to the bottom line. So that's the really good news story of the first half of the year. And then I guess the second part, we would just like to say that with respect to the utilities, everything's trending along the lines timeframes that we would expect. You know, we're not ahead or behind with respect to revenue. So that's all positive also. Further, we have two significant portions of this package or of the three portions, four portions that are included. And one of them relates to our special operating projects. We have a number of special operating projects this year, 64 in total. I like to say that 13 are complete as of the end of June, which is really good. And I think that that reflects the fact that we have some projects that get carried forward from year to year. And therefore, we don't really stop work on those projects. So we have the opportunity to complete them earlier in the year and still stay on task with respect to to getting going on all the other projects. You'll also note that most of the projects that are not started, the seven that are not started, are really related to timing and and they're things that were specifically designed to occur in the second half of the year. And that's primarily why they haven't started. There's a couple of projects that were delayed or canceled. One of those is Recycling Depot Pre-Design and and the other one is Sea and Sky Healthy Community Collaboration. And in both those instances, there's documentation within your package that aligns towards why why those projects have been delayed or canceled. Further with respect to capital, there are 90 separate capital projects. And we have, again, completed 13. And believe it or not, that's not a typo. It's just a common number, which is good because I appreciate that. It would be bad. There are six that aren't started. And again, it in a number of these instances, it's it's a timing issue where certain other projects need to be completed or are in progress before we can get started with some other capital projects because they rely on each other. And there's been a number of projects in this instance that have had to be canceled or delayed. And specifically, some of those are the Brian Storage Tanks at Public Works Building site are waiting for construction of the new building. There's been cost escalation with driving, sorry, Dryden River Gate upgrade and basically no longer have sufficient funds in the budget to complete that this year. So we're going to ask for more money. The Ford Maverick Hybrid that was requested by Rhodes, they're not available. It's that we put the orders in, but Ford has then got back to us and said that that vehicle will not be available in 2022. So we're going to have to wait till 2023. And then there's two projects associated with parks, the Parks Satellite and Parks Operations Buildings, which have been delayed and moved to 2024. And that's to coordinate those parks, facilities with other work that the district is doing. There's lots of good information provided by our managers as to where they are and what progress they've made on their projects. And at this point in time, I click to this slide that says questions and discussion. And I turn it back to the chair and say, we're open for for any questions you may have of both finance and or our managers with respect to the projects or other commitments that are undertaken this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation and allowing ample time for for questions. Council. Questions? Counsel Penningill.
I know I asked about this, I think it was last week or the week before. I just want to make sure I'm very clear. So the the increase in building permit revenue, I know we increased the fees in the last go around. Can you estimate a split like this is 50% due to new or a higher level of permits and 50% due to the new fees? Is there a split like this is mostly about the higher fees or this is mostly about a significant increase in permits?
Through the chair, in this specific instance, I don't have a breakdown of of that that I that I can align to that. But I would say anecdotally, we have a very large project come on stream that I think we were kind of waiting for. And so probably of this variance, I would suggest that maybe 600, 700,000 is timing related to a specific large project that came on stream. And and so I wouldn't say that that's related to the increase in in building permit fees. I would say that's more around timing and and just sheer amount of development that's going on.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Seeing seeing none, we have a we have I could entertain a motion to receive if the everyone has enough information. Counselor French, motion to receive. Seconder, Counselor Race, seconds, would you like to speak to?
That was a riveting report. Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, team, for pulling us closer to back to our schedule. Next, next up is the Real Estate Facilities Master Plan and General Works Update for Q3 with Mr. Bragg. Next, next up, um, is the real estate facilities master plan, uh, and general works update, uh, for Q three, uh, with Mr. Bragg. Take it away. We're ready when you are.
Good afternoon, we're in council. My name is Cal Bragg. I am the Director of Facilities Planning and Construction here at the district. This report is a memo. Uh, there's no decisions required this afternoon as council deems otherwise. Um, and it's an update. It's a quarterly update. It's one of four that we do for the year, um, on all facilities, um, and the work that we're doing. It's split into two areas here. It's split under, uh, the real estate facilities master plan projects and also projects outside of that. And I'm also splitting it into updating some of the grant side of things, the process, um, and the next steps. So on a project base here, um,
Sorry, just one second. We're not getting, uh, I feel like you have a presentation going there, but we're not seeing it on the screen. So I'll give you a second to, uh, to get that going.
Okay, apologies, technical error. I'll jump into the second slide here. So the presentation is split into two. Um, it's a project focused update, and then it's also a update based on grant funding process and next steps here. On the project side, uh, we'll be updating the fire hall number one, fire hall number two. There's been a lot of work obviously that we're, we're, we're focused on at the moment. Um, and a lot of these projects are actually split again. So the public works facility is not just public works. We're looking at salt sheds and some of the groundwork there. Brennan Park, uh, is a, the amount of sub projects and work within Brennan Park is, is significant. Looking at municipal office, that's not just the office. It's also the library, uh, the community hub. And how we're partnering up with, uh, other agencies or possibly looking at partners here. Covered structures, Valley Cliff Childcare, Squamish Adventure Center and the Junction Park Washrooms. Also looking at an update on sustainability, um, the grant funding side where we're sitting, uh, communication also, uh, how we're working with arts, culture and heritage in our projects. So fire hall number one, uh, this is our first project that was launched under the real estate facilities master plan. It was imperative that we launched on the right foot, um, and we have, we completed this one within one percent of budget and completed this year in July. The fire department are in there and it's operational as of August this year. It was a very successful project coming through COVID. Um, there's not many commercial projects that have come under this time and, and budget. Um, and we're appreciative of the project team. Now, we've also got some pretty good indicators here from sustainability. We aimed for seventy five percent reduction in landfill. We ended up with eighty eight percent. So we've exceeded that. And we've also, and for want of a better term, we're just creating a baseline saying it's lead silver. There's two levels above that. So this one is not the most energy efficient building, but it's very energy efficient compared to your standard baselines here. Fire Hall two, uh, the mandate was to start this one immediately after fire hall number one. This one's on time, on budget. We're pushing for an October, uh, start this year. Uh, the budget's fifteen point eight million. The level of sustainability we're aiming for is passive. So it's as high as you can get without producing energy. The, we've allowed an allowance to build, uh, a building above there. It's a, it could be affordable housing or a community based building. And this is the first of the IPD delivery models and what that is. It's a, it's an integrated project delivery. And instead of your standard process where you have an architect and you go in contract with the builder and then the consultants come on. There's one contract where all the participants are involved in the risk and the rewards of the projects. It's, it's, it's a different approach of how we manage our projects. And the hurdle is, as with all our projects at the moment, it's cost escalation. The temporary fire hall is well underway. We're almost complete. It's on time, on budget. It's within that fifteen point eight million of the main fire hall for our fire hall number two there. Will be finished around October twenty two, sorry, uh, next month. Um, and there's no major file, no major hurdles on this one. The bonus with this is this building can get reused. This is the second time it's being reused. Once it's done with tenless, we can pick it up and reuse it again. It's still got a fair amount of life left. The public works facility, we have been delayed from the timeline, um, and that was through the AAP process. At the moment, we're working on a class B budget. The works that are on at the moment is the salt sheds as noticed, and also we're doing ground prep. There's a preload that's, uh, happening on site right now. The two salt sheds are complete as we come into winter here. So public works can, can operate and service the community. So the next steps that we're focused on, um, is, you know, working backwards, we want to start footings and actually groundwork next, uh, next, um, sorry, next, the end of winter coming into Q two here. So about March next year ideally. By December, we're aiming for another update for the budget, which should be a class B budget. We've got one more class after that. We'll be confident in coming in and having a, a class A. And a class A, we then know exactly where we sit with, with costs moving forward. We're also looking at sustainability. This particular building is a match between, um, the office and the bays. The office is made up of a wood frame, then the bays are made up of steel, uh, prefabrication and trying to merge those together and trying to create a higher level of sustainability within budget is what the project team is working on. And we're also looking at value engineering and, and space optimization and seeing what co-locations available, uh, within the space that we've got there. So Brennan Park, uh, we've looked at merging the fields and land side of Brennan Park with the facility and the building itself. So we've got an all encompassing sort of management overview here. The one item, um, that we had success for this year is the sixteen point three million dollar project, which was the grant project. Um, and within the grant there, uh, we've already started the, uh, the, um, request for proposals. So we're well underway of pushing this one forward. And next year, we're going to see some action. We're aiming to get construction started by, uh, Q one, maybe Q two next year, um, but definitely Q two. And that work includes a new elevator, refit of the lobby, ice rink change rooms, uh, renovation, uh, a new customer service building around three and a half thousand square feet. Renovating an area up in the mezzanine to allow fitness and programming, um, some updating some landscaping. And then on the sustainability side, redoing some of the HVAC things to reduce the energy costs and then also redoing some insulation in the ice rink, um, area. So Brennan Park, um, I've just listed, uh, th- this is not all of them. This is majority of the works that we've got on, and this is no particular order. And what staff are proposing to do there is create a project charter and coming back to council to, to approve the project charter and that'll be in Q two next year. And what that does is it creates a scope of work, creates through, uh, knowledge of what resources we need to make this one happen. It focuses on funding, communication, and also an overall master schedule of how we're going to make Brennan Park happen. Um, and what we're doing there is it's, it's taking areas or information from three sets of areas. And one is diving into the information that we've got at hand, which is all the master plans and the surveys we've done to date, to the real estate facilities, master plan, fields and land, parks. You know, there's feasibility's done, um, studies done in two thousand and eighteen. There's also public engagement done in two thousand and eighteen. So we've got, uh, massive amount of information that we can tap into. We're utilizing that, really utilizing the third party, um, consultants that are coming on board within the RFP or the grant process that's in at the moment. Because when we're doing this work, it's not just the grant work. We need to work out how that fits in with the remainder of Brennan Park, um, you know, how it fits in from constructability operations, making sure that, uh, we have an allowance for any future upgrades. So it's, it's complicated. Um, and we're reaching into the, um, the market here and getting information from the architects and engineers to help us make these decisions at the end of the day. And also, um, most importantly is actually the, uh, the user groups. And we're just about to start this process now of getting information, um, and also community engagement. So all this leads into a project charter for early next year. And then we're in a pretty good position to state what's going to happen and when at, at Brennan Park. On the flip side here, um, as we pursue funding and grants, we need to make sure that the project charter is malleable and can move. We figured that if we do land a grant, we have to focus some areas and have to change some funding and everything to, to accommodate the grant that's there. On the municipal offices, we're on time, on budget. Um, we're aiming to have shovel ready after public works is complete. The budget's not developed. Um, we have looked into, uh, feasibility studies and numbers and one is, uh, there's a lease option on the table. Obviously nothing's been done on that. It's just an option as we move forward here. And the current works is, uh, we're reviewing the space plan. We have an architect on board now. And the department heads have updated, and this is coming out after COVID to work out how many we're working from home and where our staffing numbers are, are moving forward here. Um, and the other thing is we're continuing to make sure that the door is open and all the partnering opportunities. Covered structures, we split this into three areas. Um, we're calling them neighborhood nooks, which is the covered picnic tables. They're on time and on budget. Um, there's six units that are fabricated of eleven in total, and it's about to be deployed at a budget of a hundred and fifty thousand. We're a couple of weeks actually behind on budget. We're just waiting for fabrication part. We're about to deploy this into the community shortly here. We also won this year a, um, a hundred thousand dollar grant for a downtown structure. Staff will be diving into the details of that and we'll be coming back to council early next year to determine where, when, um, and what the, you know, the details of, of where this new cover structure could be. We've also put under this area Eagle Wind Trees, and that was to apply, uh, shade for summer, um, for the playground there. And we're just about to install those. We're just finalizing some details. Valley Cliff Childcare, um, this one's on time, on budget. The project team is engaged right now and we're looking at putting shovels on the ground in Q two next year. It's a two million dollar grant funded, uh, project, this one. We're starting the schematic design at the moment and just working with a new builder, um, or the new project team to create the budget. It's a tight budget, which is one of the hurdles. Um, and there's a couple of our, and it's in flood control. We've got some archaeological requirements we're working through. The Squamish Adventure Center is on time. Uh, the budget we're reworking at the moment. We're looking to start in Q four at the end of this year or Q one, uh, the start of next year. Uh, the budget for the grind is seven hundred thousand, and then we've got some additional work that we've added on that from the maintenance side. And the next stage here is to, to get market pricing, adjust the scope according to the budget, um, do details on, and then, and then start construction. The Junction Park Washrooms is a three hundred and sixty five thousand dollar project, and that was to replace the washrooms at Junction Park. We've received only one, um, price in the RFP, um, and it was over budget. So we're going to delay that and basically redeploy that again next year. Once we dive in and rework some of the scope and also looking at our other project to see what we can leverage. Because sometimes if we know if we're doing, um, you know, framing on one project, if we put an RFP out at the same time as another one, we can get good leverage from, uh, from the market. On the sustainability side, I'll just run through this quickly here. So I've picked out the four main projects. Um, the fire hall one I've gone through. Fire Hall two, we're doing passive level and we're pushing ninety percent, uh, waste. We'll see how we go because the demolition on this one is going to be kind of difficult. On the public works facility, we're doing better than fire hall one. That's probably the best way to describe it. And then Brennan Park is following what the grants are available at the moment. And the grant that we've got in is pushing for, um, energy efficient, um, heat source between the, the ice rink and the pool. And also increasing the performance of insulation in the ice rink. So on the grant funding side, we've had two grants approved, one for thirteen, sixteen point three million dollar project, um, for Brennan Park as noted, um, the other ones for the covered structure. In application, we've got another one for Brennan Park. It's a seventeen million dollar project. It's four and a half million dollars funded by the, uh, the district. This one is purely, uh, sustainable, uh, sorry, on a sustainability, uh, focus. And we're looking at redoing the envelope, which is some of the windows and the walls and the roof to reduce the energy costs of the project there. So it doesn't really add to Brennan Park. What it does is reduces the energy cost for us. And the other one we've got in process at the moment is for fire hall number two. Um, and that's a combination of, of, uh, interest favorable loan, and then also they'll leave us roughly fifteen percent of the loan that we're asking for. And we're going through details with that at the moment. We're anticipating an announcement at the end of this year for that one. And then Brennan Park is probably not due until sort of next year. It's difficult to say on timing here. On the communication, arts, culture, um, and the next steps. So we worked quite closely with communication to, um, put out what our project priorities are and how we got them, the who, the when and the why. And we're making sure we're ahead of the curve in all the upcoming projects and involving the user groups that are concerned there. On arts, culture and heritage, we're making sure that it's one of the first things after we've got project approval that we dive into. Particularly Squamish Nation, we're talking, um, archaeology, archaeology. It gets registered, um, pretty much from the get go. And we're having these conversations from the very start. We see Squamish Art, Arts Council is the umbrella and helping us with, um, working through the art side. And they, we're in constant communication with them on an overview process, but also down to each building where we're looking at dedicated art and culture and heritage and all the new builds that we're moving forward with here. And then the next steps is coming back to council in Q four, um, we'll oppose the information involved in that will be immunity off municipal office update with a space plan that we complete. Public Works Class B budget, construction schedule, uh, fire hall number two, construction update. And a Brennan Park user group update where we've touching base with, with all the user groups there and also an update on the grant side. Questions?
Thank you. Counsel, uh, Mary Elliott, and then Counsel French and Anderson.
Thank you, Cal. The, uh, the grant for the downtown covered structure is, I just wondered, is, is there a covered structure proposed at Honac Park? And could we uh, build that ourselves and use this grant money there?
I threw the chair. We could. We haven't. We're just going it right now. And we've got a few options we're talking about with planning, but we haven't got any resolution. So right now we're open to all and every feedback.
And, um, are we actually, have we seen any grants yet for things like swimming pools or ice rinks? I know those are the big ticket items and, um, but right now I think we're mostly seeing efficiency and retrofit related grants. So I just wondered if, if you've heard of anything or if you've seen anything along those lines yet.
We're specifically looking for every grant we can get our hands. And obviously for the pool and ice rink, it'd be great. Um, but the answer is no, nothing's come across our desk. Typically grants are focused on sustainability, um, and we try and make sure we fit what project into there, but nothing's been specific for a pool or ice rink.
Thank you. There was, um, uh, a reference to an interior living wall, which I hadn't come across before. I'm wondering if you could just speak to that.
Through the chair. Yeah, that's, the information's changed since I wrote this report and there was an allowance for a grant actually, um, to do a, a living wall, and we're going to propose to put that at Brennan Park. We've since taken it out because we're only going to hit two of the seven criteria through there. And sometimes it's not worth the, the amount of time and effort you put in for the grants. There's got to be a return at the end of the day. So apologies, we've changed that from the report to council. Um, and we pulled that back knowing that at the end of the day, it actually doesn't reduce energy, um, enough to warrant going for it.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Counsel French.
Thanks, Chair. Uh, I zeroed in on, um, new municipal hall, uh, in the staff report. And specifically the note about exploring, uh, school board partnership opportunities. And, uh, as I was thinking ahead on that, we know for sure there are going to be two new local school trustees who are coming in fresh. And at this table, there will be at least two, uh, new elected officials who, uh, you know, th- those individuals will come with whatever knowledge they have about the project. And I, I, I think we should assume that their, their knowledge would be low. So has, um, staff put any thought into, as we integrate the new folks into these election, elected positions? How we bring them up to speed on where we're at in those partnership conversations and, and where we're at in our District of Squamish planning?
Through the chair, yes. Um, Q four, we're proposing to come back with the new council, the update on specific items like that. And also set the, uh, the tone, so to speak, for next year and the road back for next year, uh, when we're reporting and how we're reporting. So specifically, I'm not sure when we're going to come back on that with the, um, participants, say SD forty eight or any of the other non-government or government, um, particular, uh, partners that we're possibly looking with. But we'll be coming back in, um, December to basically state what our scope is and then take the next step from there.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Anderson.
My question really follows on, uh, that was by Mayor Elliott, and it is on the downtown covered structure. I gather from your response to Mayor Elliott that the location hasn't been fixed yet, but my question is whether the grant, uh, poses constraints and whether we might consider two structures for the downtown under the same, uh, budget. Mr. Villaniscus, uh, mentioned that the Quonac Park Plan, uh, planning work will be undertaken next year, but there may be other scenarios. Is there a constraint within the budget and the agreement we have, uh, as to whether there's one or, or more structures that we might consider for the downtown?
I threw the chair. I don't believe so, but would have to check with the grant supplier. Um, I'm relatively confident to say that, yes, uh, it's just a cap on budget. It's not a cap on how many we're creating.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Race and then Penningill.
Thank you. And I'm putting on my hat as a, one of the trustees of the library board at the moment. But, and I know you referred to it as part of a city hall category, uh, but, but probably a separate building. And I'm just wondering, you know, it seems to me that these significant grants for Brennan Park skating rinks and, and so forth and the library are, and going ahead and expanding or replacing the library are very much grant driven. And so in the case of Brennan Park, uh, we've studied Brennan And so in the case of Brennan Park, we've studied Brennan Park significantly over the last years, and so from a layman's point of view, they seem to be more or less shovel-ready for a grant, but not the library. There's still a process to go through to find a possible location, consider possible co-locators, the community hub concept, you know, which is more or less the surrounding, immediately surrounding area, and to get that to the point where we might make a grant application or qualify for one. And I'm just wondering if you have any thoughts about how this might go forward, and which part is the districts, which part is the library boards, or should they be going hand in hand? How would you see that going?
Through the chair, we need to jump into that. If you look at the overview here from the real estate facilities master plan about what projects go first in the priorities here, we've got the critical out of the way, not out of the way, but we're completing the critical projects, and now we're focused on the core, so we can deploy resources to actually focus on that and to answer your question. You know, we're looking back to get funding for a grant, you need a product. To get a product, you need to be fairly well down the track of what you're proposing to do, and we're just not there with the libraries yet, because there are so many options out there, and we need to start making some decisions with the library board about what we're going to do and how we're going to create this product, and start to narrow down some of the options we've got sitting on the table at the moment.
Thank you. Councillor Penagil and then Stoller.
Yeah, thanks. Someone asked a couple of meetings ago about, I think, what's next for the temporary Fire Hall structure, and I don't remember the response, but in that context, soon we will have this available for a different purpose. With our experience over the last couple of years using this, do we have any, have we developed any thoughts about whether or not this specific or similar structure would be useful for outdoor market or covered rec or that sort of thing?
Through the chair, at this stage, the world's arroisto with that building. Yeah, we do have a couple of user groups that have expressed interest into it, but I think it's, you know, the opportunity that it's created to play that again is pretty high, so we'll be looking at that when we're ready for it, but we can use it for anything we want at this stage.
Thank you. Councillor Stoller.
Thank you. Through the chair, picking up on councillor Race's question a little bit, and as we shift away from having the critical facilities kind of on their way and shifting our focus to the core facilities, is that the opportunity for us to start to have the conversation again around public-private partnerships and public-public partnerships for funding those core facilities? Is that what we can expect in the next kind of series of projects here?
Through the chair, yes, because it's almost like a two-tier running on this one, where it's the creation of the product and then how we fund the product. So we need to run both in parallel, and we started to push the ball, knowing that this is happening and setting up for next year. So it's critical we identify what funding is here, and then obviously, you know, it's not just grants, it's the partnerships that are going to get us there at the end of the day as well, so yes.
Okay, great. And then I just had a few questions on the Public Works Facility, digging back into the drawings a little bit. I think it's on the first floor, there's the men's locker room and the women's locker room, both have showers, and then across the hallway, there's a unisex washroom, but I can't tell if there's showers in there, and I just want to make sure that from an inclusivity perspective, we're accommodating all genders.
Through the chair, we've definitely accommodated all genders. We're accommodating accessibility as well, it all falls under to the accommodation side of things. So we rely minimum on the BC Bill code to get there, but then we also rely on the function side of things. So yeah, we're accommodating.
Great. And then I do see that there are still two lunchrooms in the building, and so is that, has that been decided that that's the most optimal way forward for this building, given what we're looking for in terms of future employee, number employees?
Through the chair, yeah, two lunchrooms are required. What we've looked at is reducing the kitchen specifically, we don't, do we need two ovens in there? The answer was no, so we've pulled those out. So again, this is part of the process, we've taken the information that the community has given us, we've got the feedback from council and staff as well, and we're continually refining this project, because it is one of the, it is the most, it's the largest project that we're working on right now, so budget is a focus.
Okay, and then finally, with the downtown covered structure, I just wonder, with the delay of the washroom facility in Junction Park, if there's any conversation around trying to compile those two kind of buildings? I know that there's been different ideas around providing more programmable space in Junction Park, and whether now is the right time to do that or not, but I just wonder if there's an opportunity to kind of marry those two projects at all?
Through the chair, yeah, it's a good question. We've looked at it, we haven't got any answers at the moment. We're talking with Arts Council as well to see, you know, continually getting information about how we're going to approach this. We don't have an answer just yet.
Thank you. I have a question, and I'll come back to you, councillor Anderson. I was curious around the timeline to add to the Fire Hall, the airspace there on Fire Hall 2, without adding undue expense or delay to either, to, I guess, either project, first being the Fire Hall itself and the second being the use of that airspace, and, you know, what are your thoughts on that matter?
Through the chair, it's complicated. Once we start construction, to then change the scope, as we know, it's a mushroom effect with construction. It's almost better to complete the building, get this critical project done and dusted, and then have it operational, and then build after that. And we're designing to allow for that. For example, we're allowing particular service shafts that could possibly happen in the future, we're allowing the EV, sorry, the PV on top, which is the solar panels that they can get picked up and then put on the roof of the taller building. If we're going to do this, we should do it now, but then it's going to delay the end of the finish of this critical building. So if we change the design now, it's going to move the end date. If we change it halfway through, it's going to move the end date. It's better to complete this critical building and then build on top of that.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. I'd forgotten to ask a question regarding the Brennan Park plans, and I should have checked into past presentations on these plans, but my question is, when I look at your slide, all items Brennan Park, quote unquote, one item that I might have expected to see there is a lacrosse box. Would you be able to update council as to the status of that notion or plan to include a future lacrosse box facility at Brennan Park or elsewhere for that matter?
Through the chair, yes. I noted courts on there, and I've placed it under the courts arena. It's the same with skate park. Skate park hasn't been pushed in early enough in the real estate facilities master plan, and that's coming as well. So what we're trying to do now is, we are going to the user groups to get that information to make sure we develop a full scope of work moving forward, because if we don't put enough focus on items like a lacrosse box, then it's going to be missed along the way. So we're trying to encapsulate everything 100% right now, so if where I see that, under courts, so.
Thank you. Council, any further questions? And this was, there was no motion attached, this is just a memo, so I guess move receipt? Or you have one more question? Okay, councillor Stoller.
Sorry, forgot, I had one more question about the Public Works Facility. Part of that project was delayed because of the AAP process, but there is work going on onsite, and we see activity happening. So I'm just wondering if you can speak to what is going on onsite and what has been delayed?
Through the chair, so this site has two projects going on it. On the southern side, we have the wastewater treatment plant, and then doing a significant amount of work, and that's where the majority of the work looks like it's happening right now. From the public works side, the work is basically, it's focused on groundwork and then moving the salt sheds. So the salt sheds have just been completed and moved, and then we're doing a preload, and then we're just kind of, we're going to waste until after winter to remove the preload and then start cutting the footings in. So what we did during AAP is we worked on a already approved budget of $5 million and had that one running, waited for the AAP to come through and be approved, and now we're focused on the actual construction side. So we're gung ho on the construction side, we're just aligning budgets and making sure we're confident we can build it for the amount that we say.
Okay, councillor Stoller removes her seat, second by councillor French. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Appreciate the update. And we're moving on now to item four, Fire Hall number one naming discussion, and I'll turn over to Ms. Glenday to maybe to introduce the topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, council. I'm presenting this afternoon on behalf of Ms. Latimer. She is online, but unfortunately couldn't be here in person, so we felt it was better that somebody in person presents. So Megan is online to answer questions. You have a memo before you, and we do have a PowerPoint actually that I'm getting ahead of myself. Sorry. I will try and pull up here. Harley's coming to the rescue. While he does that, and in the interest of time, the memo before you refers to the naming of Fire Hall number one, which Cal just presented as our first critical structure that was officially opened in July. In 2020, when staff brought forward the forming character overall project to council, staff also included some background in terms of naming it officially Fire Hall number one for operational reasons, to follow standard protocol with safety, sorry, emergency and safety buildings, public safety buildings. Where there was a policy alignment gap is that we have a commemorative naming policy, and in that policy, section eight refers to what happens when you rename a building, which in this case, by not including Alex Monroe, one could say that that gap was, or a gap was created with that policy. So staff took it as tacit approval that we could move forward with calling it Fire Hall number one. Memorializing chief, Fire Chief Alex Monroe was always meant to occur and has, if you move forward. The previous Fire Hall that was there in Valley Cliff had a rock, cairn, and a plaque, which has been reinstalled in front of the new Fire Hall. So certainly Chief Alex Monroe's legacy was always meant to be upheld and memorialized. Staff are before council now because of that gap and following the policy. The commemorative naming policy does require public consultation and council direction if staff propose, or there's a proposal to rename a building. In 1999, the Fire Hall number one was dedicated to Henry Alexander Monroe. Although his name was never put on the side of the building, it was anecdotally always referred to as Alex Monroe Fire Hall. In 2017, our wayfinding program updated the signage on the old building, which you'll see in the next slide, including Alex Monroe's name. This sign actually is currently in the training ground and will be permanently displayed in the training ground. The Fire Hall is still under development, I would say, in terms of the training ground itself, but that sign will remain in the training ground and prominently displayed. So all of this to say, in order to meet the needs of the operational requirement and request to call it Fire Hall number one, to continue to honor Chief Alex Monroe's legacy, staff have put forward two, or sorry, three recommendations for council. One would be that the Fire Hall is still referred to as Fire Hall number one. We do have a rendering, we're in the process right now of getting budget, sorry, if you go to the next slide, to include Chief Alex Monroe's name on the side of the building, to make sure that his legacy continues and is well prominently displayed and visual on the side of the building. And then because we recognize that our commemorative naming policy is 20 years old, that we recommend that staff update the naming policy. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have councillor Race, then Mayor Elliott, and on from there.
Thank you. Could you go back to one of the pictures? Just, yeah, that one's fine. So it occurred to me that I just wondered if staff had a view of why we might just not call it Alex Monroe Fire Hall number one, more or less like the previous sign. And I can understand the administrative efficiency of having Fire Hall number one prominent, so that people know that's number one and the other one's number two. But just saying something's in memory of somebody is not quite the same to me as calling it that name. So in my history with that building, it's Alex Monroe and Fire Hall number one have been used sort of interchangeably. And so the name of the building was the Alex Monroe Building, really. And so now it's not that, it's just in memory of him. So I was wondering if we just could go back to Alex Monroe Fire Hall number one, and not being a graphic artist, but I would suggest that we would just add the name Alex Monroe just before the word fire in the same font. So it's there for anybody to find and see, and there's no question, that's the Alex Monroe Building.
We're before council, because we want council direction on how to sort of meet the needs of both, which is memorializing Chief Alex Monroe and calling it Fire Hall number one. So when somebody calls 911, when somebody's on the radio, for operational and safety reasons, it needs to be called Fire Hall number one in terms of staff and operational guidelines, safety and staff operational guideline recommendations. That's our recommendation. That said, we're here before council for council to make that decision. We feel that it meets everybody's needs, the recommendation is before you, but I leave it to council's discretion.
Through the chair, I will just touch a little bit about the Fire Hall number one. Just the reason why we need a clear Fire Hall number one is really, across, you know, we've said before, across the province, it is referred to, Fire Halls in every jurisdiction that ECOM or dispatcher utilizes are called Fire Hall by a number. And I think that's the reason, because they look after many fire departments across BC, it's easier on their end to do it. And also going with that, the apparatus are named in accordance with the Fire Hall. So what you would see in this picture would be Engines 1 and Engines 11 tied to the Fire Hall, and so that's operationally why we would want a Fire Hall number one. So just a little bit of clarity about the operational reasons for having a Fire Hall number one.
Follow up this one.
And I can appreciate that, certainly, but it's, I guess it's, for me, there's a bit of a distinction, and I think the other example that's prominent in our community is Brennan Park, for example, and that was named in memory of Pat Brennan. So Brennan Park, as it sits now, if we redid it and called it something else like Squam, or Mamquam Park or something, in memory of Pat Brennan, somehow that to me is not quite the same. And I agree, I think the administrative efficiency certainly is a priority, I understand that completely. And that's why I'm wondering if just having the two there as opposed to just the one, does it complicate that? Does one take away from the other? Does one confuse the other? If we did it sort of just Alex Monroe Fire Hall number one as opposed to Fire Hall in memory of Alex Monroe?
Yeah, thank you.
Through the chair, I believe staff have already answered that question, and it's up to council to now debate and the merits of the proposal, but I believe staff have clearly articulated their answer to the question.
Thank you, I'll accept that. Moving on to Mayor Elliott's questions.
I just want to understand the history a little bit better, because when we look at old pictures of the Fire Hall before our wayfinding project, there was no name on it that said Alex Monroe, but the rock and the plaque were there, and so in the original dedication, was the name supposed to be on the building? Or was it the rock and the plaque were, that was the name, and that's how it would be depicted?
Through the chair, I, in terms of our research for this project, can't definitively answer that, other than the name never ended up on the side of the building until the wayfinding project in 2017. When you read the plaque, it says Alex Monroe Fire Hall, and as I mentioned, it was always referred to as Alex Monroe Fire Hall when you look at marketing collateral or any kind of references. It's an opportunity to reset and meet operational and safety efficiency guidelines for a public safety building, which is very different than a recreation building or a municipal hall. which is very different than a recreation building or a municipal hall. In terms of the history, yeah, whether it was an oversight that the name never got on the building or that the plaque was supposed to be enough. In any event, we would really hope that we could honor Chief Alex Monroe by having his name on the side of the building and refer to the building as Fire Hall number one.
Thank you. Counselor Stoner, followed by Anderson.
Thank you. Through the chair, I too appreciate the need for the operational efficiency component. But I'm just curious, after our years of experience of it being the Alex Monroe Fire Hall, kind of holding both those names, have there been examples of where safety was challenged by having that dual nomenclature?
I can take that. Operationally, we have referred to as Fire Hall number one. That's what we refer to it as in the field. And so, no, that hasn't been an issue that I know of, but I've been here seven years and that building has been here longer than me.
Appreciate that. Thank you. And then my other question was just around a component of the naming and commemorative naming policy is around community engagement. And I'm just wondering, in the proposal that's in front of us with the in memory of Alex Monroe, if any engagement had happened, has happened with the family or broader community in terms of the proposal that's in front of us today?
The short answer to that is, is no, the family was, well, actually, no, it's not no. We did let the family know, we sent them the memo. We did get feedback that they're not happy with the in memory of, they want it to be called Alex Monroe Fire Hall. Staff aren't attached to the in memory of, we could just put Alex Monroe under it, dedicated to. This was one idea. You know, the idea of putting Alex Monroe or Chief Alex Monroe on the side of the building is fantastic. We just would really like, our recommendation, as we mentioned, is to just not have it in front of the word Fire Hall number one.
Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. In mulling over for myself, opportunities that may exist for alleviating family concerns and for commemorating this significant individual, it occurs to me that Clark Drive is becoming ever more confusing. And now I go back to a time when Burner Drive was a logging road and nobody was confused about what and where Clark Drive was. But that has since changed and it comes up all the time, including in this building. Now, since the re-changing of the intersection, we have Clark Drive splitting into three at its southern end. One for the intersection, and some people think the other side of the highway is also Clark Drive. And then we have Clark Drive extending up to the elementary school and to the Fire Hall. My question is, I'm not making a proposal here, but I just thought I'd take the opportunity to ask Chief Stoner whether this creates any kind of confusion or if there's opportunity for better clarity by renaming the road into the Fire Hall from Clark Drive, which by the way, is named after Stan Clark, another father of the community and another family.
Through the chair, thank you, Counselor. Road naming, we're definitely pushing the edge of my expertise. I do understand your point though about having three names and I do understand that. But really pushing my, what I went to school for here. So I'm not going to jump on an answer to that today, but I understand your point.
Perhaps then Ms. Glende, I've just put forward this topic that we have a roadway splitting into three, which kind of complicates perhaps for wayfinding in future and may present opportunities in future for other initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Penningill, then French.
Thank you. So I'm terrible with names. And so I know I will struggle regardless of the decision for one or two or Alex Monroe that goes on the building. If I have an emergency, and hopefully I don't, and I call 911, I'm going to use the Valley Cliff Fire Hall, the Chief Fire Hall, those are the words I will use with the operators. And I would expect that, you know, especially visitors from out of town and so on, they're going to pick a landmark like the chief or something like that. So I guess I'm trying to wrap my head around where that comes into the discussion and the naming and ECOM's understanding of the naming. Because I would anticipate that that's how most people would refer to this building in an emergency with an operator.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Yeah, I think when we talk to referring to Fire Hall number one, that's our communications with dispatch, dispatch communications with us and our communications with ourselves, where it is always referred to as Fire Hall number one. Generally speaking, if someone calls 911, they don't ask for a Fire Hall as such, they ask for a fire department.
Okay, so I think, trying to put words in anyone's mouth, I think what I'm hearing is we, you know, ECOM will have an understanding of multiple names and will have some understanding of how to sort of orient that to a specific Fire Hall when they're speaking to a fire department and so on, they will use one or two. And then beyond that, there's a fair bit of flexibility in terms of what name we put on the building and it's not as consequential in terms of operations and so on as long as to an ECOM or fire department, you folks know that you're using one and two. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay, I'll leave that for now. Thanks.
I have Counselor French, then myself, then we're back to Mary Elliott, unless it's on this point. Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. So through the process of putting together the push and ceremony, the surviving family members of Alex Monroe made it fairly clear to me that they had just one simple expectation. And that was that the name Alex Monroe would be visible on this wall from the road. And that expectation dates back to 1999, when the building was dedicated. And then ultimately, the name wasn't put on the building and visible from the street. And my feeling was that the family just accepted that and always expected that one day the name would be there. Along comes this shiny new Fire Hall. We get to the point where the lettering is up and the family sees the name Alex Monroe is disappeared. It's not just the family that's disappointed, but it's other families with long, long histories in Squamish who have other things named after their long-lost relatives. So with that context, has any pricing been put together that would indicate what kind of cost we're talking about to have lettering on the building visible from the street like this lettering?
At the time of this presentation, we don't yet have a firm quote. We have an upper threshold of $5,000 wherein staff would not have to come to council for extra money. We're getting pricing for the size of letter that's there. But unfortunately, this is simply a rendering for example purposes. We don't want anyone to get attached because we don't yet have a firm quote on what it's going to cost us.
Thank you. I can see, do you have something on this point or, okay, I'm on the same. So my questions are similar around the budget. And what was spent or what portion of the budget was spent on the signage there that is there? Do we have an idea of what? No, okay, that I see some, you know, as different solutions are about it around here, I just note there's lighting above to light that sign so it's visible from the street at all hours. So without removing whatever we do, I think we need to be conscious that we stay within that, that sort of the lit area of the signage so it's effective and it isn't an add-on. I quite like the the way this, the way this looks, and I think it is a good solution. But I'm conscious if we start moving this around too much, we'll have to redo the whole signage and perhaps add lighting, which will just be and, you know, on a new building, which I think is, I don't want it to look like an afterthought. And I think this meshes in there nicely with the lighting. How much of the consideration is that visibility and that lighting? Because again, I don't know how often someone's called to Fire Hall one and they're needing to navigate from a wayfinding standpoint. So operationally, is that a major design consideration? It jumped out at me, but I don't know if that's.
Yeah, I think the lighting is important to identify the Fire Hall as, I mean, it's not only a Fire Hall. There is quite a bit of meeting space in there as well. And as we all know, with fall upon us, it does get dark quickly in the winter months. So I think the lighting's important.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the chair, I would just like to provide some clarification as well that in the event that the budgeting of these letters goes beyond what say we can pay for in 2022, it may be that the letters go up in 2023 and we work it into the budget. So staff's not saying that the budget would preclude necessarily putting these letters up. We just can't get attached to what it looks like just yet.
Thank you for that clarity. I'll go to Mary Elliott and then Counselor Penningill.
So when we scoped out this Fire Hall and we agreed that we would focus on standardized naming, Fire Hall one, Fire Hall two, that was agreed by this council. And we want to make sure that all of our firefighters and our volunteers refer to it as Fire Hall one. I'm imagining that in some instances, if we have a major emergency, whether it's an earthquake, a big flood, a fire, we will have people here from other jurisdictions. When the dock was on fire, we had firefighters from other locations. If we have a major fire, we will have people here from the wildfire service and provincial coordination. So it's important that they're not confused. This is, it's not just because our professional firefighters will remember to call it Fire Hall one. It is, it is my understanding that this is a best practice, that you keep it clear because in a major emergency, it's not the people that live here that need to know it's Fire Hall one. It's everybody. No one can be confused about that. And this is also our emergency operations center. So I just, I'm just trying to understand, this is a best practice that we're trying to put in place here.
Yeah, that's correct. It's a best practice. And I don't know the name of every Fire Hall in BC, so I don't want to claim outside of my scope here. But to the best of my knowledge, Fire Halls in British Columbia are named according to a number.
So Ms. Glende, today, we could move these resolutions forward. We could provide some guidance on adding the name or not and where. And then we would leave it up to staff to complete that process with the family and the budgeting and bring it back to councils, should that be necessary. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. And with all respect to the family, you know, staff have provided their genuine apology that they were missed in terms of the communication around this change to highlighting Fire Hall number one on the side of the building. And that was never the intent. The intent was always to honor Chief Alex Monroe. I am under the impression, based on correspondence I've had with a member of the family, that unless it is called Alex Monroe Fire Hall, they will not be 100% happy. So, and then I'm only speaking on behalf of one person, so I don't want to. In terms of incorporating that into the process, my concern would be that I don't know that we'll entirely meet the family's needs. My hope would be that at some level, putting Chief Alex Monroe's name on the side of the building prominently and lit would meet that need, including them in the process and the motion may make it stickier, but that's up to council again.
But from 1999 till when the signage went up in 2017, we had no complaints.
That's correct. We heard nothing.
Thank you. Counselor Penningill.
Is this an opportunity for some thoughts or was still questions?
Well, we're going to be moving towards voting on these resolutions. So if it moves us in that direction, then go ahead and offer your thoughts.
Okay, I guess the, one of the things I'm struggling with in this discussion and, you know, maybe it was partly happening in the background. I had thought that, to be honest, our commemorative naming policy was already considering topics of inclusion, diversity, and equity. And I am thinking that, you know, we've heard reference to fathers of the community and so on. But these are recent fathers of the community and I don't want to diminish their contributions to the community. But there's a much longer history of peoples here whose names have not been recognized and quite frankly, have been erased in many cases. And that whole piece of this discussion, how we're naming things in a time of reconciliation and so on, is also getting missed. And maybe it's an unfortunate piece of where the dialogue with the family was missed because I would have liked to have seen that as part of the discussion as we think about naming this. How do we consider the, you know, the much longer history that hasn't been identified here? And we haven't spoken about that today yet. And I'm not quite sure what the resolution is, but I feel like that's another missing piece. And it's sort of addressed in the third resolution, but that sort of assumes that we just move ahead and deal with this piece afterwards. But for me, it's an important part of the discussion.
Thank you for that comment. Counselor, looking for motions, Mary Elliott.
I'll move that the new Fire Hall and Emergency Operations Center facility located at 37890 Clark Drive be called Fire Hall number one for operational clarity.
Seconded by Counselor Stoner. Would you like to speak to it?
I'll just reiterate that I believe this decision was made quite some time ago. I believe it is based on best practice and to avoid any confusion, not in the day-to-day, but in a state of emergency. I think this is critical and I still think there are ways to honor this gentleman without moving away from that best practice.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. I will be supporting this, knowing that there's a follow-up motion. But I do think that for operational clarity, it makes good sense that this is referred to as Fire Hall number one. I think that is a discussion that we had around this council table previously. I don't think when we did have that discussion that I fully understood the history of the naming of the building with Alex Monroe. And so I will look forward to the follow-up motion in terms of adding that name to the exterior of the building. But I do think that operationally, number one makes sense and it follows best practice. So, but there are other Fire Halls around the province that have numbers and names, and so I think we can do both.
Thank you, Annie, for the comments. Not seeing any opposed. Motion carries. Counselor Stoner.
I'll move that signage reading Alex Monroe be added to the exterior of the facility in similar size font as what is on the building and with some feedback or input from family members.
Is there a second for that, Counselor French? Counselor Stoner, speak to it, and then your next Counselor French.
Yeah, just to follow on on my previous comments, I do think that honoring the legacy of Alex Monroe and the expectation that I think, from what I understand, was set out in 1999, that the name would eventually be put on the building. I think that there was false starts in terms of, there was changing lettering and signage and then there was wayfinding project and it got delayed and the number of things that happened. And so I think now is it an opportunity for us to just kind of set that straight and put the name on the building? I'm not going to try and dictate where it should go. I think that that can be done at a staff level. But I do think from my perspective, it's important to keep the name Alex Monroe on the exterior of the facility. And I trust that our that our staff and those who come into our community will continue to follow the number one best practice that's actually on the building. I think that that's very feasible. So that's why I put forward this recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor French.
I was encouraged to hear from staff that a quick and rough estimate on the cost for such signage would be in the $5,000 range. Because I don't think this needs to be lit. I don't think that we need to insist that people call it the Alex Monroe Fire Hall. All the expectation here is that his name is on the Fire Hall. And that was the expectation from the very beginning. So I think that this resolution gets us to the best scenario because we can continue best practice of referring to it in emergencies as Fire Hall number one for clarity. And then we also have the heritage recognition continuing on the building.
Thank you. And before we move on to Counselor, yeah, actually, Mary Elliott will be next, but who was the, sorry, we just missed the second on that. It was Counselor French seconding that. Thank you. And Mary Elliott.
Ms. Mary, can you read the motion that's on the floor, please?
That signage reading in memory of Alex Monroe be added to the exterior of the facility in similar size font with some input and feedback from the family members.
Just a point of clarification, we can strike the in memory, just Alex Monroe.
I'd like to move an amendment that we lose similar size font and say in a font that preserves Fire Hall One in prominence.
I'll second that.
I believe that we can achieve the intent of the original motion and still have it in quite a large font. But I think we should make sure, because of best practice, that Fire Hall One stands out. And so I think saying similar size font, I think takes away from that. So I would just want, I just want to say in a font that preserves the prominence of Fire Hall One and then leave it up to people that know about signs.
And speaking to the amendment, I'll be supportive of this. I think the, that size of similar size font wasn't what we were presented in the, in the renderings. And when I look at that building, I don't think that that's actually doable at this point without doing, redoing the whole signage. So I think this amendment better captures what we're trying to, what we're trying to do here. So I'll be supporting. On the, oh, go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
I won't be supporting it. From the conversations that I've had with family members, the sizing is important to them. And I think that placement of the lettering can go in below or something like that. But I have pulled up other images of fire halls that also have names associated and they're along the same lines of Fire Hall Number X with the name. And so I think to try and recognize some of their requests that have come forward from the family, that was the original intent of my motion, so I won't be supporting the amendment.
Thank you. Any, before I call the questions, any further comments? Counselor Penningill.
I've decided I will support this. I think because of some of the missteps around communication and so on, I think it's important to put this conversation on a, a, a more positive track. But I'm also looking forward to the next resolution. And, and I think we have to anticipate that moving forward, if we are serious about reconciliation and things like Orange Shirt Day and so on, we are going to have to think about adjusting how we've named things. And there's, there's many examples of this. And so I, I am supporting this with the anticipation that this will help make those discussions a little more open and, and profitable. But I would like to set that expectation that that's where I see us needing to go next.
Thank you. So with that, I'll call the question on the amendment. Any opposed? Fails. Oh, sorry. Race, Stoner, French, Anderson oppose. Motion fails. So back to the main motion. I had Counselor Race next.
Yeah, I'm supporting the main motion, not amended. And, and I was probably one of the people that voted at the previous council meeting some time ago about the naming. But certainly personally didn't appreciate some of the subtleties of that. And so now I think I have a greater appreciation of that. I think it is important that the building is actually named after Monroe, not just the building is in memory of him. And to me, there is a distinction. I don't want to take away from the prominence of Fire Hall Number One. I totally recognize and support the operational requirements of that. But I think, and I'm not going to be prescriptive about how we put the name there or where it goes. But I think there should be a compromise there that does not take away from the administrative efficiencies required.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. In support of this motion, I'd like to first state that I would like to acknowledge the sensitive treatment of this topic in our communications produced by our staff. Having said that, however, the story of Alex Monroe is in fact more impressive than what we are delivering. Having had the opportunity to review the Board of Trade archives and, and records of his work, I can state that, just among other things, Alex Monroe himself, single-handedly raised money, came out of his own pocket to buy the first fire hose for the village fire brigade. His daughter, by the way, raised money, came out of her own pocket to establish the library, sorry, his daughter-in-law, Freedom Monroe. He was also responsible, to a greater extent than we are presenting, for the district's diking programs over the first three, four decades of municipal or village diking. And in addition, he established the Garibaldi Cemetery. It was another single-handed project of Alex Monroe. I would also then point out with respect to the issues raised by Counselor Penningill that it has been suggested to the heritage strategy, which is ongoing, that attention be given to naming policy. And that includes our use of Squamish Nation names. I believe this is something we are inevitably going to be revisiting as, or the next council will, as it will probably be coming forward as part of the heritage strategy. And I think that's actually where it belongs. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Mary Elliott.
I certainly believe that Alex Monroe's name should be on the side of the fire hall. I am concerned that this motion still confuses the issue, but I will support the motion.
Thank you. I'll be, I'll be supporting the motion. I, my, my preference was for the, for the rendering that was presented as I felt it captured the intent better. But it's not enough of a sticking point to me to be a showstopper. So I'll be, I'll be supporting. And I, I assume if, if that requires a whole new signage for, for the building, that that'll be something that I'll have to come back to a future budget to actually accomplish. But that's one of the knock-on effects of the particular wording of this motion, in my opinion. So but I will be supporting this time. And with that, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Counselor Stoner.
I'd like to move the third motion that council directs staff to review the commemorative naming policy with the Review of Included, Diversity, Equity and Access Committee.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Race. You'd like to speak to it? Go ahead.
Yeah, just briefly, I think as per some of my council colleagues' comments, I fully agree that this policy is outdated and needs a review. In reading it, there's a section that says place name should be written in English, be simple and easy to pronounce, spell and write. So I think just that in itself suggests that we have a little ways to go in terms of updating it. So I'm happy to support, put this motion on the floor and, and bring this policy up to the 21st century.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, and I just, this is just my own perception and feeling. I, I suspect that part of the challenge we have had in here is, I think, I feel like council has been listening to our concern about inclusion and diversity. And so I think that's been part of our concern about the, the naming and maybe some of our, our missteps. And in any case, I'm glad to see this moving towards this review. And it is time to review this and we'll happily support this.
Counselor Anderson.
I'll just note that I believe that about six to eight months ago, we had a presentation or an exchange with our communications manager. And council did give direction to having a review undertaken of the commemorative naming's policy with respect to Squamish Nation or First Nations names. And as I've mentioned, it will come back to us likely as a recommendation of the heritage strategy. But in any case, I'm happy to support the proposed resolution as is.
Thank you. I'll be supporting this resolution. I think it's an important piece of work. And had it been reviewed prior to this endeavor, maybe we wouldn't be here speaking about it now. So I hope that this adds clarity going forward. And, and in some ways, I would like to see this work done prior to the discussion that we're, we're, we've been having. But I think it, I think we're, in all the motions, we're heading in the right, in the right direction with the right intent. And generally, that leads us to the right place. So thank you for bringing it forward. And with that, I'll, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Ms. Glenday.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I just do want to wrap up in terms of making sure that it's very clear to the community, the family and council that, that staff absolutely support this motion to have Alex Monroe's name on the side of the fire hall. And that was never in question. And we are generally, genuinely apologetic around this policy gap that brought us to this discussion and appreciate council's time.
Thank you for that. Okay, item five. This is our, a presentation on inclusion, diversity, equity and access, our idea committee update and inclusionary strategy. And Ms. Peterson, are you leading us on this one? Okay, over to you. Do you need a second to get? Why don't we take a five-minute recess here? We'll be back at 3:26. Thank you. Welcome back. We're on to item five, inclusion, diversity, equity and access, or the idea, update and inclusion strategy. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Glenday to introduce the topic and then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Before we get started with the particular update on our inclusion strategy for council's consideration and endorsement, I wanted to bring to the community's attention just a reminder about council's original motion that was passed around diversity, equity and inclusion work that has inspired and directed staff to do this work. There are four bullets that you can see on the slide there that were part of the original motion. It's important to note that today's presentation focuses almost entirely on the first bullet. So this is what is our internal work looking like and what does that strategy look like? Getting our own house in order, so to speak. In terms of the subsequent bullets, we have at this point seconded our research and projects coordinator position to initiate the DEI work that we're working on. As we're learning this work and digging into our own internal strategy, the, the scope, the sensitivity, the learning, the resourcing, frankly, that we realized will be required to deliver on the balance of this motion is much larger than we currently have. So in the coming year, we will continue to second this coordinator position to work on the DEI work. And much of that work will be around commencing this strategy. So and then getting into phase two, which you'll learn about, as well as putting together future resourcing plans for council consideration in order to do a more fulsome job on the, on the balance of the bullets. But we wanted to make sure that your entire motion, the direction, the comprehensive nature of it has not been forgotten and is, is in our sights. So that I will turn it over to our staff team from the idea committee, Ms. Asia Peterson and Chayton Kaur, and they will present the strategy to you.
Thanks, Glenda. Good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. I want to first duly note the acknowledgement of thanks to be able to live and work here on the Squamish Nation territory. I'm so grateful to be here. My name is Asia Peterson and I'm the Projects and Research Coordinator, and I use she/her pronouns. And this is Chayton Corr, a Legislative Assistant here at the District and a fellow idea committee member. We are so thrilled to be here today to provide an update on the idea committee's biggest project to date, the development of an inclusion strategy called Ideas and Actions. You should all have a copy in front of you there.
Good afternoon. My name is Chayton Deep Corr. And as Asia mentioned, I'm the Legislative Assistant at the District of Squamish and a member of the idea committee. I'm super excited to co-present the inclusion strategy to council today. Before starting on the presentation, I would like to acknowledge that English is not my first language. If I say a word or a phrase differently, please let me know if you would like me to clarify or to repeat it. The idea committee is a cross-departmental committee. All idea committee meetings are open for all staff to attend and share ideas and concerns. We have a mandate to provide education and resources about topics related to inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility. We offer trainings and learning opportunities to staff. We also serve in an advisory capacity. We review policies, staff events and new programs and provide recommendations through an ideal lens. We also oversaw the development of this strategy, which involved identifying and prioritizing solutions and engaging in staff discussions to better understand inclusion challenges at the district. This strategy is internally focused at this point and we will, and it will serve as a work plan for the next few years.
So while the District of Squamish calls this work idea, it is often referred to as DEI or Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Work. So these, these strategies broadly serve as plans for organizations to better identify shortcomings or challenges related to inclusion. And then it helps them to outline solutions or actions for how to attempt to address those challenges and supports organizations to meet their DEI goals. So this strategy being presented today identifies broadly five idea goals and several objectives and actions to meet those goals. And as Chayton mentioned, we're focused on our internal, internal service delivery for our staff. A plan that looks at our external-facing customer services will be the next phase of this work. So why invest in this work? With an increased number of complex projects that our staff are taking on, you might be asking why we should be spending our time on this kind of work. Well, we know that this work requires a lot of time and a lot of effort, but we also know that it's critically important to the success of organizations. From a purely output lens, the research clearly demonstrates that organizations that invest in DEI have a more productive workforce. It shows that it yields better company earnings and higher retention rates. More diverse organizations have also been shown to be better at problem solving and innovation. But besides an increase in productivity, we know that this work is critically important because at a foundational level, supporting and promoting the health and wellness of people, of workers, really, really matters. We know that at a structural level, there are so many inequities in our society and that despite merits and hard work, certain groups of people are denied opportunities and face discrimination based on their gender, race, age, abilities or other key parts of their identity. So this work attempts to acknowledge and better understand why and how that happens. And then it enables us to identify ways to help address those issues. And another key reason I want to point out today that this work should be top of mind for everyone is that in organization here on this land, we're committed to truth and reconciliation. As a government staff, we are, we have a strong responsibility to recognize and learn about the impacts of colonization on Indigenous people, particularly Squamish Nation members, and find ways to support reconciliation. The strategy attempts to highlight actions that outline our commitments in this area.
Talking about our process, developing ideas and actions was a collective effort that took place over the past year involving idea committee, district staff and subject matter consultants. In early 2022, we engaged the services of a consultant firm in Toronto called Quake Lab to support the design of our process. Quake Lab's methodology involved several steps, including evaluating where we are in terms of inclusion currently, engaging with staff to identify and understand challenges related to inclusion at the district, identifying solutions, prioritizing solutions and finally drafting the strategy. Now, talking about the steps undertaken to draft this strategy. A big part of this work was engaging with staff. We conducted a number of staff engagement sessions across departments and all levels. Staff engagement sessions were first conducted to understand what challenges existed at the organization level and then again to identify solutions. The idea committee then reviewed the feedback that was received from these sessions and connected these themes with the current research in these areas. Solutions were then organized by theme and prioritized into what you see as the action plan in the strategy document. Some of the key feedback provided by staff included difficulty for a woman to navigate through male-dominated areas of the organization, disconnection among staff as they were working from home over two years to follow the COVID-19 protocols, lack of time to attend inclusion workshops and training events. Now, five key goals were identified for the action plan based on the feedback received from staff and the research that we did.
So over the next few slides, we're going to go over the action plan, which outlines our goals and objectives we have for the next few years. Our intention is really to start where we're at. And you'll notice that there's a great emphasis on learning, exploring and approaching this work with humility and an open mind. So the first goal that you'll see here is really to build on and foster a culture of inclusion at the district. to build on and foster an inclu-, uh, a culture of inclusion at the district. We want to make sure that idea is a key tenet of our organizational culture. Some of the actions that we've identified to achieve this goal include developing inclusive language, communication and engagement standards. These standards could include how to introduce yourself at, with pronouns, or how to host a meeting so everyone can participate regardless of their ability. Other actions under this goal center around formalizing the idea committee's work through resourcing the idea committee with a full-time position and more prominent updates in the CAO newsletter. And finally, we want to make sure that our staff engagement processes and staff events are inclusive and accessible. Goal two is perhaps the most important. Our goal here is centered around education and making sure that all of our staff have a shared understanding of inclusion, diversity, equity and accessibility. We know that everyone is approaching this work with different, a different set of experiences and awareness of some of the issues at hand. Our actions here include developing a full-day idea training that will cover main topics such as racism and anti-racism, gender identity and expression, and diversity and ability, and so on. Other actions include updating our suite of onboarding trainings to include an overview of the truth and reconciliation recommendations and cultural humility training. Goal three is about equity and professional development and leadership opportunities. Our intention with this goal is to level the playing field as much as we can. We want to make sure that our professional development and growth opportunities are transparent. And we want to make sure that we are focused on actions at both the corporate and the department levels. Our actions here include reinstating a corporate leadership continuum and, and ensuring managers are trained in idea concepts and psychologically safe workplaces. Management and department heads have such a critical role in this goal. We need to ensure our leaders are offering opportunities equitably to all staff. Goal four is our people goal. Here, we want to ensure that our internal policies and programs reflect idea principles. These actions are largely HR-focused, as HR has a huge function in creative, creating inclusive work environments. We've worked extremely closely with our HR department, so big kudos to them, um, to develop these actions and priorities. The, the actions out under, under this goal include introducing a work experience pilot program in collaboration with Squamish Nation and reviewing our benefits and compensation offerings with an equity or idea lens. And finally, uh, the last goal is to ensure our built and virtual environments are accessible. This goal is so important, but such a massive undertaking. In order to support this goal realistically, we identified actions that we were strategically aligned with work already being done at the district, such as supporting the establishment of an accessibility committee and the development of an accessibility plan. We also included smaller retrofits that make our spaces more inclusive, like clearly designated gender-neutral washrooms and facilities, and creating more awareness of resources that we already have in place that staff might not be familiar with.
As for our next steps, we are really eager to get going with the actions that we have identified in the plan. As you will notice in the strategy, each action has been assigned to a lead who is responsible for ensuring that each action is implemented. In some cases, that may mean delegating tasks to another staff member. Where necessary, other departments or teams have been identified to support. To ensure we keep on track, we will be bringing back annual reports on the status of these actions for council review. This strategy will also be updated biannually. The idea-related concepts are still evolving and changes a lot, and we want to ensure that we are aligned with the best practices and relevant research. Finally, in order to evaluate our success, we will be using the staff engagement survey as a way to check in with the employees' feeling of inclusion and belonging. The updated employee engagement survey has questions related to these topics and will be conducted in the coming weeks. This will serve as a baseline for our purposes, and we will measure these sentiments year over year. Additionally, any projects that are more defined, such as training programs, will have their own evaluation processes. What we decided not to include in the engagement survey were questions to measure diversity. Survey questions are more focused on understanding needs of our staff. We determined that measuring the diversity is not essential. It does not really matter that the provision is required for one or 10. Whereas it is important that we include our current and future employees seamlessly. I would further like to acknowledge that the idea work is not that simple, not only because it is extra work for the committee members, but because it's vulnerable and sensitive work, and it requires empathy and compassion. There are no perfect solutions to the social, to the social problems related to idea principles. However, the work needs to start somewhere. It is possible that no drastic results will be visible in near future, but even if the needle moves a little bit, we will count it as a great success.
So as Chayton said, we want to acknowledge that doing idea work is not easy. We're dealing with challenging topics that are very personal and very emotional for many people. This work is about challenging inequities that are bigger than our individual actions. We're trying to navigate unjust systems that exist within our society and doing our best to make sure we address them in any way we can. But that said, I want to give a huge heartfelt thank you to council for supporting this work and to our incredible idea team who brilliantly gives such thoughtful feedback and insights, and to the amazing staff and leaders who contributed to this strategy, sharing vulnerable experiences and excellent solutions. We're really ready to start implementing these actions and look forward to continuing meaningful dialogue in this area. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Thank you for that presentation. That was wonderful. I've got, uh, Mayor, Mayor Elliott, and then Council Penningill.
Thank you for the presentation, and I will acknowledge that I am also still a learner in this work. Um, but it's great to see this plan come together. And I put myself first on the speaker's list because I have to go and drive a kid to an appointment. So I'm not rushing out because I'm, I don't think this work is important. It's just, we're running behind, and I thought this would be well behind us at this point. Um, I'm just wondering, the provincial and federal governments are starting to use, are already using GBA plus analysis, and I wonder if this is part of our training program to, to bring this in so that we can look at budgeting and policy development through that lens.
Yeah, through the chair, I've noticed a lot about that particular methodology, and it's something we'll definitely explore as part of our training schedule and regime. Um, certainly something to talk about with our HR committee to consider how we're budgeting for these different training needs and trying to prioritize which ones come first. But certainly, yeah, and we're aware of it.
Yeah, I think it's important that we speak the same language, especially when there are grant opportunities, because I think this is the lens that they will be evaluating, um, proposals through. So I think at some point, we need to understand what they want to see if we're applying for grants. So, yes, thank you for that. Um, one of the things, um, it talks about supporting social community to host more opportunities for meaningful connection, intercultural events. I just want to make sure that while this work is focused internally, there are the opportunities to work with community partners also trying to hold intercultural events and just getting our staff to attend them. Uh, there was an African dance and potluck recently and, you know, throughout the summer. Um, but it's not something that we necessarily widely share within our four walls, but we definitely have a welcome center and a settlement center that is actually trying to do a lot of that work. So I wonder if there's room for that, um, as you say, in trying to accent or elevate this work in our minds.
Yeah, through the chair, thanks. Um, I think it made it into the strategy, but one of the actions are around trying to set up, um, a program within the district to allow staff time to volunteer. So that was more focused on volunteering, but the, the connection there was really getting people to think about issues that might, that might be broader than what we face on a day-to-day basis at the, at the district. So certainly events that are intercultural or celebrate diversity in any way would be a perfect example of how our staff could contribute in that way. So definitely something we'll look into.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm going to dial in and listen to the rest. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Um, Councilor Penningill.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, very pleased to see this work happening. I think previously I've, uh, expressed a desire to see us move into the, the later phases, uh, but I understand the, the rationale for, for where we're starting and, and there's some great, great work planned in this, I think. Um, but in, in terms of the internal focus and, and the staff focus, I understand that. I'm wondering, does council fall within that internal line? Like, we've had some opportunities to participate in a few things, but I'm just wondering where we fit in the internal versus external, uh, piece of this.
Through the chart, great question. We actually just had this discussion this morning when we were considering what is included in internal services. So we were so focused on our staff and, and our operations. Um, but certainly all of the training opportunities, I think, will be made available to council. And certainly as we review policies with that idea lens, those would apply to all policies that apply to council as well. Um, so I think that's our focus right now, but if there's something more explicit we can do to support, um, inclusion for council, um, that's definitely, we definitely could consider it in the next phase of the project as well.
Okay, thank you. And, um, you know, appreciate your discussion around measuring diversity. From my perspective, one of the other reasons, or i- if we are successful in this work, then we would anticipate that our staff looks very much like our community. So it's not just a question of, is there a need for this? It's more, um, I wonder about measuring to know, are we being successful? And if we know how many people we have from different groups, we can then measure or identify if, if we're mirroring the community and therefore being successful. So I'm just wondering if it's worth a little more thought about whether or not there are reasons to measure, uh, the diversity.
Thank you so much for that question, uh, through the chair. Um, I always feel like we had this discussion at the idea committee, uh, meeting, and, uh, we were discussing the questions. And as this question came up, where there were questions about, um, age group, there were questions about ethnic backgrounds. Uh, the discussion was going sideways, where we were not discuss, uh, discussing which option to select. We were discussing more about, um, what, how should we word this? Should we say a person of color? Or should we say someone from Asia? Or like, what should we say? Like, what kind of phrases we use? So I think the work goes sideways when we start categorizing people. Do we really need it? That was the other question that we considered. Do we really need to know how many people need accommodation, or how many people are visible minorities? We just create a place which is for everybody. So that was the reason, but I understand your point as well. Uh, it's important to, you know, like, know the statistics and to know how many people of different origins are, um, uh, in the part of the community. But I feel like there are other ways through which we can find that information. Stats Canada has that information, but, uh, if we are saying that we want to include everybody as, as one group, and before that, uh, the idea committee felt that we shouldn't be categorizing people into groups. It was just, um, a mutual decision that we had because we were, we kept discussing and that discussion was never ending.
Okay, thank you. I'll leave that one for now, and it ties in a little bit to my next question, which is a bit of a process one. So the resolution is for us to adopt this, but I'm sort of wondering if, if we're better to receive this. And my thinking is, as this is at this phase directed internally, we've said we support the funding of this already. So I'm wondering if at this point, if this is really more of a, a CAO decision. I feel like we're stepping over our bounds a bit as a council, sort of approving or disproving, disapproving this, and, and maybe it is best for us to receive this.
Who would like to tackle that one? I think that was maybe for you, Ms. Glenda.
Uh, I appreciate, uh, the thinking around that in terms of it, if it's internal, then it, then it's operational. Um, at the same level, I think when we're talking about something that is, intersects with, you know, our human rights code and council's direction, uh, because it was a council direction, we felt that it, uh, is important that council endorses it, and it, it gives it that much more leverage for us.
Thank you for that. Councilor Penningill, that it, you're good for now. Uh, Councilor Stoner than Anderson.
Thank you, uh, through the chair. Uh, a few questions similar to Councilor Penningill had, uh, so I'll dig in on them a little bit more. Um, the staff engagement survey that you speak of, are you planning on that being anonymous, or is that going to be like tied to certain departments? Have you given that much thought yet? You can say you don't know.
Yes, through the chair. Um, it is already very close to being in the works. It's, it's actually conducted by the HR department. Um, so Julie, if I'm missing anything, chime in. Um, yeah, it'll be completely anonymous. Um, and with, with like not even enough detail to be able to tell which departments. We're really trying to keep it as safe as possible for people to be able to answer as genuinely as they can. And it should be going out in the next couple of weeks, I think. Tomorrow. Oh, yes, tomorrow. So a perfect baseline for us.
And I guess building on Councilor Penningill's question of like, where does council fit into that? Is that an engagement survey that you would expect to send to council?
Through the chair, I am not sure. You can come up.
It is, uh, sorry, through the chair. Um, it is focused primarily on staff. This is the, the staff engagement survey, so we haven't captured council in that as well. Um, it is something that we could do going forward. Um, but yeah, this one, this one primarily is, um, yeah, focused on our staff.
Fair enough. And I think it's an odd time to include council as we're on our way out, and we just adopted our new code of conduct policy, but it may be something that we might want to think about, uh, as this work evolves over time. And, um, my other question was just similar to Councilor Penningill in terms of appreciate where we've gotten to on not wanting to dig in too much on identifier information. Um, but I think one of the risks there, just to highlight over time, is people feel really comfortable when they're around people who are like them. And so there's two ways to look at that, right? So people are comfortable when you have a culture of inclusivity and people feel like they're welcome. And then you also have a, or the opposite end of the spectrum, which is everybody kind of looks and feels the same, and so I feel included. And so I think that's just one of the risks. If we don't include those metrics over time, um, I don't think that we're there as a District of Squamish. I think we do have representation and diversity, um, but I just want to make sure that that doesn't totally get lost as we look at that over time.
Yes, Ms. Glenda.
Thank you through the chair. That's, that's an excellent point and noted. Thank you for that insight. Um, another part of the discussion that I was part of in terms of the idea committee and the metrics is that as we embark on this work, we really are at the initial steps of the deep inclusivity work that we're doing. And until we have a culture where people feel safe identifying, trying to measure it is really challenging. And so once we are at a place through the engagement survey and, and the work is gaining traction, we will definitely revisit the idea of metrics. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. And I think that that makes good sense. Um, my one other point, and it's more of a comment that I'll just make, that I think, um, as I was, she was also looking forward at, at the list of, uh, the pieces that we put together in the, in the original council motion, how we kind of work our way down that list. And I do think it's important to get our own house in order first. But I also look through the action plan, and I think some of the components in here will act, will naturally kind of have a spillover effect. And so I think that's a really important thing just to keep in mind that just because we aren't, we don't have a specific action plan for that last item on, or that last bullet point on that list of the council motion, a lot of this work, I think, actually sets us up really well, um, to achieve some of that. So I just wanted to highlight that, and thank you for, for the work that's gone into this.
If we adding to Linda's point, um, you mentioned that sometimes people feel comfortable around, you know, similar group of people. Um, I would like to share my personal experience. It took me almost two years to join the idea committee. Um, I, the feeling that I had was maybe I'll, I'm gonna, I'm too, uh, close to these topics that I'm gonna say something silly, or I'm gonna make a joke of myself, or I, or my opinions will be biased. But it's, it's how the, um, how the group, uh, deals with you, or how they, um, make you part of that group makes a big difference. So another thing is, we just wanted to have a very safe first point, first entry point into the, among the staff. And then at a later stage, when they start trusting us more, when they feel comfortable, when they are, they feel that this is a safe environment where they can freely say what they want to say, there we can do whatever we want to do, because then we are us. And the other thing is, um, I think I have been, um, here for almost four years, and now I can be myself because people around me have made me so comfortable. I can be the silly me. I can, you know, talk in Punjabi and they know that I'm stressed. So it's, yeah. So it's, yeah. It's just the comfort level. So that comes with time, that comes with the trust, and that's from both sides. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your own experience.
Yes, thank you. I have Counselor Anderson next.
In one of your slides, you had a list of topics of exclusion relating to inclusion, rather. Two of them popped out at me. All abilities and disabilities. And another one, all ages. And when I contemplate those two items in particular, something occurs to me. And that is online computer skills, navigation skills, computer skills generally, which is quite often an issue for older folks, including me. I often am finding interface, I get into interface with citizens who have issues with, for example, our development showcase website, webpage. They have difficulty navigating to find information about this development project next door. And these are often older people. And similarly, many people are expressing interest in paper copies of surveys. Where can I find them? Are they accepted? Or, I really do want a public information meeting or appreciate public hearings, because I like the face-to-face. That's the way I'm accustomed to finding information, talking with my neighbors about a specific district topic that's before us. So my question is, and you may treat it as a comment, if you like, but should the issue of online computer and computer skills perhaps receive some emphasis in the package that we have before us? For a local government inclusion strategy, should we give some emphasis to those types of skills which are often related to your age and that type of educational background?
Thank you for the question, through the chair. As I said earlier, there is no perfect solution to all these principles. If you look on the one side, it's like, should we move ahead with the opportunity available with technology development? Should we be incorporating programs where people can learn? There are some organizations who provide training with our, I mean, like, there is Hotspots, E2Sky Community Services, who provide these lessons to people who need accommodation around technical difficulties, where they can learn how to use computers. But the other thing is, yes, for sure, like, our websites. And I think we had a meeting with Communication where we discussed this, that our website should be very accessible. And to my understanding, when we talk about council meetings, we provide printed material as well as online material. But for sure, that's a great point. Who needs accommodation should be provided accommodation, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this work. I think it's really, really important, and it's great to see how clearly engaged everyone involved in this is in the work. I really appreciated the acknowledgement that even a small movement in a direction is still a movement and is worth undertaking. So thank you for highlighting that. My, I guess my comment is around the inclusion of council in these processes. Because I know for myself, this is work I'm really, I'm really interested in. I feel it's really important. And there is an interesting line between council and staff. And just maybe making, I think it would be helpful for council, this one and future, to understand that it's a conscious decision where council is and isn't included. Because often, it feels like it wasn't considered. So, and I don't necessarily think that there's a specific spot where, but that's just a piece of feedback from my experience of engaging in these different initiatives and such as this. And I don't know if that intent has been applied to the pieces to date. And if it has, I'd love some explanation around where everyone feels that line is.
Yeah, thanks, through the chair. Luckily, we're right at the beginning of this work, so we have a lot of time to still include different stakeholders. And like I said, we were so focused on our staff operations. But I think now is like the perfect opportune time, especially with elections coming up. And we can, you know, think about our onboarding for new council, for example. That's the perfect time to introduce them to this work. And something we've already thought about at the idea committee as we're developing, you know, new onboarding trainings for staff, we can develop something similar for council as well, just to orient them to this work, make them aware of the trainings that we offer, and emphasize that they're invited to participate with staff as well.
Yes, thank you for that. And I think also, not knowing the composition of the next council or future councils in general, maybe to speak about it more broadly, I think there's aspects of this work that would really benefit from having that lens applied to it, sort of in advance, before there's someone there that requires an accommodation or doesn't feel. And like I said, our code of conduct sort of is a periphery to this, and we like to not run into that. So, yeah, I think there's some good work that can be done there all together. Counselor Pedengill.
Yeah, just to maybe put a finer point from my perspective on your comments, Counselor Herford. I think, you know, personally, I would really like to be involved in whatever kinds of trainings and learning is available. But, you know, to the degree that does or doesn't make sense as part of idea, the idea committee, I would sort of like to know, and maybe it is more for the next council, but where that line is more clearly, because the next council may want, if they don't belong in part of the idea process, may want to set aside and probably should set aside their own sort of space to do some of those learnings. Because I think it's really critical for the next council to put time into this, whether it's through idea or through their own sort of mechanism. And so just being very clear what is available to council sooner rather than later is probably a good idea.
Yeah, through the chair, that's a great point. And one of the strategy recommendations, one of the actions, is to review the idea committee's membership and the makeup. So we could look at different models that, you know, might include, you know, some sort of council involvement or, you know, a parallel committee from the council's perspective. We can look into that, too.
Thank you. Counsel, any further questions before we entertain motion here? Counselor French moves the staff recommendation, seconded by Counselor Stoner. Any further comments?
I didn't have any questions. So I think this is a great opportunity for me to just pile on with the praise. It's really great work. And it's the kind of work that makes our community better. And I really feel, from my own experience, and thanks for sharing that story. That's, I mean, touched me. And I think I have a similar experience at this table, where I spent a lot of time observing the work of District of Squamish Council dating back to 1990. And there were some very challenging personalities at these tables, in these chairs. And I think that if previous councils had operated under this context, more might have been achieved. And I've had the good fortune of working with a council that I think has lived under this type of thinking without having it printed. So this captures how we've been as a council, and I think reflects somewhat top-down. So I'm very pleased with this work. And I think it, I'll just reiterate, it makes us a better community to have something like this in print.
Seeing no other hands, I'll call the question. Any opposed? I didn't think so. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for the work. And we'll move on next to item six, which is an update on culture and values work. And Ms. Glenday is going to lead this one. Okay, taken away, Ms. Glenday.
Great, thank you. Through the chair, a brief presentation this afternoon to update council and the community on an initiative that the district kicked off in the spring. And what that initiative is ultimately is having a look at our core values and our culture here at the District of Squamish. So why are we doing this work? The main reason is that we want to lead our culture with intention. So here at the District of Squamish, we do believe that we enjoy a very positive working culture. And that said, it's something that we do want to have a look at, clarify our core values, because we want to sustain the current strengths that we enjoy, but also recognize that we're growing and evolving. And we want to have a look at that and do it with intention. So why now? One of the reasons, frankly, is that as part of my objectives as CAO, you just had a presentation on our inclusive strategy, is having a look at that inclusion and how do we make sure it is part of our culture more than just a strategy, continuous improvement as well. So there are elements of our culture that we want to capture and make sure that they're included as part of how we operate as an organization. And that is specifically directed from council to me. But also, it's been 10 years since we've updated our core values. When we did that 10 years ago, what was needed at the time was a real boost in our service excellence culture. So it's hard to believe now, but back then, service excellence perhaps wasn't top of mind or necessarily what we were known for. And now it seems like we almost take that for granted here at the district. As I mentioned, we want to prioritize our new societal context, so inclusion being a big part of making sure it's also part of our culture. Of course, we're coming out of a pandemic. It's a great time to reset. We will be meeting with a relatively new-ish council, depending on what happens, and restarting with a new strategic plan and a new council. And so it's a great time to make sure that as we introduce ourselves as an organization to that council, that we're very clear on the culture within which we want to operate with council and with the community. So the, this is my favorite slide, and I'll give Asia credit for the picture. We did kick this work off at the core leadership team level, but it quickly turned into, how do we do this with the broader organization? This is not something that six of us wanted to come up with and then disseminate throughout the organization. So we have just recently formed what we're calling the Culture Working Group. I wanted to call it the Culture Club, but people said it dated me, so I wasn't allowed. We now, we so far have 17 individuals from across the organization, different levels of seniority, different levels of responsibility, from frontline to management, which is fantastic. The first meeting of that group is tomorrow, and we'll be kicking off a process by which we will be sharing kind of the core leadership vision of why we're doing this and sort of the culture we're looking for, but also wanting organizational engagement and contribution. So the group will be working with the broader organization through a series of coming together, going back out to the organization, which is, oops, what's going on there? Captured in this slide, and we are in the area now that's highlighted. So the group comes together, broader engagement with the organization, comes back together, back out to the organization. So by the end of December, what we will have are the outcomes we're looking for, which is ultimately a vision for our culture. So as mentioned, we do believe we have a positive culture. Are there areas that can be improved? Yes. Also, what areas and where do we want to stretch? How do we see ourselves growing as an organization in that context? So we want to have a cultural vision statement. So this certainly wouldn't replace our community vision statement in the OCP, but be more about who do we want to be as an organization? And that will include some refreshed core values. It could be that the core values we have are perfectly fine. We do find they're hard to remember. They're a bit wordy and lengthy and not top of mind for people. So we just want to refresh them in any event. And then follow that up with some guiding principles. So some key, you know, practical, focused statements that are inspiring and powerful for employees. And, you know, why, or sorry, how will these be used? You know, really, by all the leaders in the organization, formally and informally, in terms of, you know, our vision, decision-making, actions. Core values are great decision-making filters within and across the team. So how we work together with council. So how we work together with council. You know, I think that over the lifetime of this organization and the brief time that I've been here, 15 years, the relationship and the team environment between council and staff is probably the best I've seen. And not to say that the debate isn't rich and critical thinking isn't really important when staff bring recommendations, absolutely. But the idea of relationship building and working together to achieve those strategic visions is really important. And then last, and really importantly, is the community. So, you know, the expectation is in the two-way street. So how do we treat one another as staff? And how do we treat the community? How do we expect the community to treat us, to treat council? So just more enriching the idea of how we operate. So that is a very brief overview of one of the key initiatives that I'm spearheading on behalf of the organization as this council wraps up and we step into the next one. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Counsel, questions? Counselor Pedengill.
Yeah, just listening, you know, I appreciate this work. It seems there's a bit of a dilemma, though, and it's what I want to ask about, where on the one hand, you know, having this really strong and embedded in the sort of staff part of the organization might be really important to weather a bad council. And hopefully, we don't have a bad council. But, you know, I can see the value of that. On the other hand, if council, if you have a council that's not leading and living the culture and values, it seems that it's going to be really hard to maintain them. And so I guess I'm wondering how or when or if you see council being part of this work and this development.
I'm going to be completely frank with you as council, which I know is what you appreciate in me, is an aspect of me, actually. There's never a time I shouldn't be. The importance of a cultural vision and core values is that that transcends councils. And the CAO's job and the leadership job and the employee's job is to work within that culture, regardless of the Board of Governors, in this case, the council. So while we can apply it with council and work with council to work within that culture, ultimately, it's the organizational culture led by the CAO and the staff. And that preserves that culture, regardless of who's sitting in this horseshoe.
Well said, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this? Okay, and so that was just an update. So we're not looking for a motion here. So if there's no further questions, I suppose we're, it feels like we're good. Thank you so much for that, and I think it's an important work and look forward to seeing the outcome.
Thanks for your attention on a long day. Appreciate it.
Okay. So it's quarter after four, and we've just approached our 3:30 recess time. So on the agenda, so I'm going to keep pushing forward here. And if that's, if we have the appropriate staff in the room for the next topic, which is the 2023 Permissive Tax Exemptions. Okay, so we will, so we will take a minute just to get the right staff in the room. We're going to come back and we'll do five minutes. So we'll We're going to come back and we'll do, we'll do five minutes, so we'll be back at 4:20. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back to a special meeting in District of Squamish. We are on to item seven, discussion around the 2023 permissive tax exemptions. And Ms. Sousa, I believe we have, sorry, I'm just going to go to Counselor Race here.
Thank you. Just to let council and the public know, I have conflicts on two of the items, the golf course and the West Coast Railway Heritage Association. So I'll step out certainly for the voting on them, but also any comments or discussion on those two points, if we could separate it out from other discussions.
Thank you for that. Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Yes, I'd like to declare conflict in relation to two of the organizations that are in our list before us. Firstly, the Cedar Sky Forestry Center Society, in which I'm a committee chair and with some purview over some of the functions of the organization that are highlighted here. The second organization I feel I must declare conflict is the Squamish Valley Golf Club. The Curling Club is an affiliated club, and the outcomes of the permissive tax exemption application of that club can affect membership fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Does this greatly affect your presentation in any way, or?
Maybe I could just ask for a point of clarification. So in terms of the presentation, would you like me to move those three organizations to the end then, so that you can step out if you, okay?
Yes, thank you. I think that would be, that would be best, and then we'll do our best to not wander into those topics along the journey, and then we'll discuss those separately. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name's Rianne Sousa, and I'm the Director of Financial Operations at the district. I'm joined here today by our General Manager of Community Planning and Sustainability, Gary Buxton. So on the agenda today... Oh, my slide moved forward, sorry about that. So the goal of today's presentation is to present the 2023 permissive tax exemptions, the applications that we received, and get council direction on these. On the agenda, we're going to review the legislation for P T Es, review the District of Squamish P T E program, and then as well, review the applications that were received and staff recommendations. I just do want to note that we did receive several applications from organizations that are regular applicants and awarded P T Es, so we'll primarily be focusing on new applications. So first with the legislation, the Community Charter of B C, paragraph 224 states, a council may by bylaw exempt land or improvements or both from property taxes, which are referred to as permissive tax exemptions. So from here on out, I'll call them P T Es, because I'll be saying that a lot. A P T E will exempt all property taxes, municipal and other, and redistribute the taxes to other taxpayers. A P T E may be granted for up to 10 years, and council must give public notice of the proposed permissive tax exemption bylaws. P T Es differ from general statutory tax exemptions granted under section 220 of the Community Charter, in that the decision to grant a P T E is at council's discretion. So the District of Squamish P T E program is an annual program, so we have an annual intake in the summer. We received 13 applications this year. We assess all the applications against legislation, as well as the District of Squamish P T E policy. And then we also recommend, and what we've been working towards over the past few years, is to group similar nature organizations into the same number of years for P T Es, just so that council can assess them altogether. So these are our regular applicants, and I will skip two of them due to the conflict, but they are on the screen. So on the left-hand side, we have the applicants, and then on the right-hand side, we have the estimated 2023 P T E value. So I'll just read through the applicants. Our regular applicants are the Alano Club of Squamish, B C Lions Club Society for Children with Disabilities, B C Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals, Royal Canadian Legion Diamond Head Branch Number 277, and Cedar Sky Nordics. So what we are recommending is we, or council, sorry, grant a five-year P T E for these organizations. What this does is it gives them stability for funding, as well as reduces the administrative burden of having to apply more regularly. Again, this can be granted for up to 10 years. In the past, these have been granted three years, but we're recommending moving it to Now to get into the more complex applications that have new components this year, we're going to start with Cedar Sky Community Services. So on the left-hand side are the properties that applications were submitted for. The second column is the whether the legislative criteria was met. Third column is whether the policy criteria is met. Fourth column is whether staff recommend a P T E, and I'll go into why we recommend or don't recommend a P T E, and then the estimated 2023 P T E value. So before diving into this, I first wanted to note that district and Cedar Sky Community Services staff have been working really closely together to understand the provincial funding mechanisms and to make sure these are maximized. And then we also have been working together to ensure that Cedar Sky Community Services and not the province will be the beneficiary if a P T E is granted. So first with Castle Rock, these are Cedar Sky Community Services-owned non-market housing units. So although this building meets the legislative and the policy criteria, we're not recommending a P T E for this building, and the reason is B C Housing funds deficits for the building. So if a P T E is granted, it's the province that will be the beneficiary of the P T E, not Cedar Sky Community Services. Then moving into the Center Point Building, there's three pieces to the application. There's the offices and programming, there's the Cedar Sky Community Service-owned non-market housing units, and then there's the provincial-owned non-market housing units. So first with the offices and programming, we, or council, has regularly granted a P T E for the offices and programming. So with, as with the other regular applicants, we're recommending a five-year P T E be granted again. And then that will give them security and funding, as well as reduce the administrative burden. So sorry, that goes from three years to five years, the recommendation, and that's approximately $58,000 for 2023, the P T E value. Then moving into the Center Point, Cedar Sky Community Services-owned non-market housing units, both of these do meet the criteria for a P T E, or this meets both of the criteria for a P T E. There isn't B C Housing funding for this, these units, so we are recommending a five-year P T E, again, for security of funding, as well as reduce administrative burden of continually, continuously applying. And S S C S or Cedar Sky Community Services is the beneficiary of this P T E, and that is approximately $18,000 for 2023. And then the last piece of center point is the provincially-owned non-market housing units. So this doesn't meet the policy criteria of the district, and this is because the units are provincially owned, and therefore no P T E can be granted. The next property that Cedar Sky Community Services submitted an application for is the five buildings referred to as the Riverstones. These buildings are either provincially owned, or they're developer-owned. In both cases, they either don't meet the legislation, or they don't meet the District of Squamish policy, so can't be awarded a P T E. The last building that Cedar Sky Community Services submitted an application for is Spirit Creek, and there's two components to this. There's the Cedar Sky Community Service-owned non-marking, market housing units, and then there's the offices and programming that are on the first floor. So this is the building on Buckley Avenue that's, that's expected to be receiving occupancy at the end of this year. So first with the non-market-owned units by S S C, again, although it meets the legislative criteria and the policy criteria, we're not recommending a P T E. And the reason for this is B C Housing provides a subsidy that pays for property taxes. If the property taxes are reduced by P T E, the subsidy is reduced. So that means that B C Housing, not Cedar Sky, would be the beneficiary of a P T E. And then lastly, for the offices and programming, we are recommending a one-year P T E for this, and the reason we're not recommending a longer period, as with the Center Point offices and programming, is the operations aren't up and running yet. So Cedar Sky Community Services is in the process of working with other community organizations that may operate from that space, in which case they'll be paying for their portion of the property taxes, so definitely want to reassess that next year. Then moving into other non-market housing providers in Squamish, we have Squamish Helping Hands and Squamish Seniors Living Society. So with Squamish Helping Hands, first, there's two components to their application, one for under-one roof and then one for the overdose prevention site. Both meet the legislative and policy criteria, and staff is recommending a one-year P T E for under-one roof to provide us more time to understand the B C Housing Agreement for under-one roof. So with a one-year P T E, it'll give us the option to reassess that again over this year, and then provide a recommendation for P T Es next year. With the overdose prevention sites, Squamish Helping Hands has a lease with the District of Squamish, and the lease is month-to-month, so recommending a one-year P T E so that we can reassess it next year as well, due to the month-to-month lease. And then lastly, is Squamish Seniors Living Society. So Squamish Seniors Living Society built a new building, referred to as the West Winds, on a different piece of property than its old buildings were on. And the old building's land was sold to a developer. So the old buildings and land received a statutory exemption, so they didn't pay property taxes on that, on, for that property. And the reason for the statutory exemption is it had to be provided for seniors' housing, and it had to be a building that was built during a certain period of time. And so since West Winds now, it's still for seniors, non-market housing, but because it was built in 2022, no longer, 2021, 2022, it no longer receives a statutory exemption, so we're recommending a permissive tax exemption for a five-year period, again, to provide stability of funding and also reduce the administrative burden. And the estimated permissive tax exemption for 2023 is $231,000. And then we're getting into the last applications, with the exception of the conflicts, that we can discuss after this slide. So the other P T E applicants were Housebound Women's Center Society, the Squam, sorry, I'll skip that one, and the Cedar Sky Montezori Society. So with Housebound Women's Center, both the offices and programming and emergency shelter meet the criteria for a permissive tax exemption, we're recommending for the office and programming to continue to grant a permissive tax exemption, and again, for the five-year period, for stability of funding and reduce administrative costs. For the emergency shelter, we're recommending a one-year permissive tax exemption, and the reason for this is we would just like, or need additional time to work with Housebound Women's Center on their, with their B C Housing funding agreement, to get a better understanding of that. So one-year exemption will allow us next year to do that. And then lastly, with Cedar Sky Montezori Society. So Cedar Sky Montezori Society leases a property on Lager's Lane from the District of Squamish. Prior to 2021, the operations were in a company incorporated under the B C Corporations Act, and therefore was statutorily ineligible for a P T E. In 2021, Cedar Sky Montezori Society was created and incorporated under the Societies Act, which is eligible for a P T E. Since the limited company and the societies are related, share resources, and the limited company is profitable, staff do not recommend a P T E is granted for this property. So at this point, I can either move into the impact of the value of the P T Es that summarizes it, or could have a pause to speak to the properties that are in conflict.
Thank you. I think it would be appropriate to speak about the pieces that we have conflict on. However, I don't think that the, I'm trying to figure out how to keep as many counselors in the room as we can when we get to the total, but I feel like probably those conflicts allow us to talk about the topics in general, but I don't think we should include the people in conflict in the overall number discussion, because that's directly related. Thoughts from, I'm looking for Robin, but the, for guidance on this one, to make sure that we stay onside with this discussion and thus decision going forward. So why don't we start with the conversation piece around? Yeah, I think we, let's go to the, let's go to the golf course discussion. So at that point, we'll have both Counselor Race and Counselor Anderson step out, and then we'll go through the topics, and then we'll get a decision around the, how we handle the overall discussion. So we know we need to do that part, so let's start with what we know, and then we'll, we'll get there.
Okay, and I'm declaring a conflict in this one, as I have in previous years. I'm a member of the squash club, which is a related body and part of the same tax-paying entity, and so this has an indirect financial impact on me.
Thank you.
Chair, I'm declaring a conflict in the case of the Squamish Valley Golf Club, as I'm a member of the Curling Club, which is an affiliated club with the Common Financial Administration, and does affect membership fees.
Thank you very much, Counselor. We didn't.
Through the chair, what we've done historically is separate the bylaws out for the actual readings, which will happen next week. So if the discussion and the motions are moving with the conflicted properties out, that's possible.
Thank you. I guess the other question I just have procedurally before we proceed is, Ms. Arthurs, we have, we've got two counselors in conflict on a couple of different topics around this, around this, and we're about to, they've stepped out, we're about to discuss the golf course, which they have joined conflict on. The, I'm just wondering about a conversation around the overall number. Do we bring them back for that, or is that because they have a conflict on these items that could feed back into that number, they should be set aside from that discussion as well? That's, I just need some clarity there. And we can go into the golf course discussion, you can mull it over if need be.
I'm just curious, if you're discussing each one of them individually, and the amount of the P T E, why do you have to discuss a cumulative number, just from my understanding?
I believe that's, just to understand the cumulative impact to, to, to the budget, I'm...
Okay, cumulative number and impact on taxation, cumulatively, without speaking to any individual P T E, it would be fine.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. I think we're, thank you for keeping us onside. All right, moving on to the golf course discussion.
All right, so the golf course is the third row or fourth row down under the heading there. So the Squamish Valley Golf Club, a P T E is granted by council annually due to a contractual obligation in the lease. So what was negotiated in the lease is due to the restriction on charging lease fees on what was previously Crown Lands. What's negotiated in the lease is that a P T E will be provided to reduce the taxes down to $45,000 per year. So that, that is the golf course.
Counsel, any questions on this piece? Counsel, any questions on this piece? Counsel Penningill?
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I understand that last comment. We are giving them a PTE, so they still will pay $45,000. It's capped at that. So unlike the others, it's not, we're giving them $45,000. It's, that's their max taxes. Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any further questions on this one? Go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
Can anybody remember how much, how long we have left on that lease? I know that's a random question off the top of our heads, so okay, it's fine if you don't know, but.
Through the chair, it's, it's not in the report. We do have that information, just not on hand, so I can bring it next week to the three bylaw readings, if that.
That would be helpful. Yeah, that's fine. That would be helpful. And just from my memory, I know that we went over this in, I think, one of our early years in, in office. But is the Squash Valley Golf Club a society or a nonprofit? Is that how we get around it? So it's not actually considered assistance to business?
So parts of the golf course are not-for-profit, are nonprofit, and parts of it are commercial.
So then this only applies to the appropriate spot in that rationale, just to wrap that up. Okay. Any other questions on this topic before we move on? Okay. Thank you for that. Maybe we'll move on to the forestry topic, but I'll get Counsel, Counselor Race back and then we'll have to switch them back and forth as, as we go here. Hey, thank you. Counselor Anderson previously declared a conflict on the Forestry Center, so we'll discuss that portion now.
So the Cedar Sky Forestry Center Society owns the property that is adjacent to the Adventure Center. It currently is being used for Adventure Center parking, but it is leased by Cedar Sky Forestry Center Society. So they have submitted an application for a permissive tax exemption and the permissive tax exemption is $266 for 2023 estimated.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on this one? Right, oh, do you have a question?
I was just gonna make a comment and it's because it's a potential museum site. That's the intended use.
Thank you for that context. Seeing this know for the discussion around this. We're gonna get you to trade out with Counselor Anderson as we'll move on to the Railway Park where you've previously declared a conflict. Okay, so our final piece here will be the West Coast Railway Association.
So the West Coast Rail Association is also a regular PTE applicant. The estimated PTE value of granted in 2023 is $104,000. And again, we recommend the five-year period for stability of funding and for the reduction of administrative costs for the organization.
Thank you. Counsel, questions on this one? Okay, so, oh, yeah, go ahead, Counselor Stoner.
I just have a procedural question. The staff recommendation is to move all of these tax exemption bylaws. Should we move the ones where we have council members in conflict separately?
Yes, please. Sorry, the group ones together and then you can move the individual ones after counselors have left the room.
Thank you. And I have a, before we do that, I also have a procedural question where this agenda was originally a committee of the whole. Is there benefit in, should we do anything different, differently than what's presented on the, on the agenda with the, given that it's so special instead of a committee of the whole?
No, essentially, this is just direction to bring forward next week the bylaws and then do the advertising.
Just have two more information slides. So wanted to present the summary of the permissive tax exemption value if the staff recommendations are accepted and PTE is granted. The 2023 municipal and other taxes will be estimated at $554,000. That increases to $559,000 in 2027. Just to provide a bit more information in terms of what other taxes means, it is the school, hospital, SLRD, Municipal Finance Authority, and BC Assessment Property Taxes. So that it's understood how this actually affects the existing tax base. So all of the organizations, with the exception of Center Point, which is the Cedar Sky Community Services owned non-market housing units, are already considered as having permissive tax exemptions. They've received them in the past. So that means that the money that would have otherwise been received through taxes is only for this building. So in 2023, the estimated total taxes is $18,000 and it increases to $21,000 in 2027. When you remove the other taxes, the municipal tax, taxes are estimated at $12,000 in 2023 and increased to $14,000 in 2027. So the recommended resolution is that the District of Squamish advertise and bring forward the District of Squamish 2023 permissive tax exemption bylaws for consideration at the regular business meeting to be held on October 4th, 2022. Thank you for your time and I'll now pass it over to counsel for discussion and questions.
Thank you so much, Counselor Penningill.
Yeah, thanks. And I may have missed something on our last couple of meetings, but we just reviewed the PTE policy. And, and I agree with the assessments and recommendations we've seen today, but there's some disconnect between the policy and the recommendations. And I sort of understanding that our policy updates would bring, would sort of be, make us in alignment with what the recommendations are. So I'm just wondering why some of those disconnects didn't end up in the policy.
Through the chair, frankly, through a fault of timing, that policy was frankly ready in June. We couldn't get it onto council's agenda prior to the recess, so it came in, it came in September. We, we just didn't have the information that, that we have now. We didn't have in sort of the February, March, April, when we were working on the policy. So frankly, we, we thought, we knew when the policy came to you, we're probably gonna have to tweak it. We are going to have to. I mean, the intent of the policy was the PTE benefits the nonprofit operator. In this case, I think masseuse has reached that, that point that let's make a recommendation that benefits the operator and not, and not simply flows money to the province effectively. So it's simply that the policy was developed quite a few months ago and it was, it's only really in the last few months that we've started to dig to this level of understanding about how those, those operating and finance agreements work. So we do need to, we will need to tweak that policy.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And then my other question is just to confirm that the recommended total PT amount is contemplated in the other budget numbers we've seen so far? Or is this going to change some of those numbers?
Take that. Through the chair, so this has been contemplated in the current budget. The tax requirement is really what the budget is part of. Where these come through, if there is a net difference year-over-year, is through the non-market change. And we have made those assumptions when looking at the non-market change trends.
Thank you. Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I'm a little intrigued by the Cedar Sky Montezori School situation. In your presentation and in the report, you touch on the reasoning for the shift with that institution. Is there more to it that wasn't in the report and wasn't spoken? Or is it just as simple as what we've heard?
Through the chair, as simple as what you heard. Yeah, nothing more to it.
Okay, so then now that has me wondering, are we being fair and upfront with these folks? Do they know that they're, they're being reevaluated in this way? And have they budgeted to further additional costs that I presume they're gonna be facing?
Through the chair, with the submission of the application, that's the, that's the intent, is to reassess the, the organization and the eligibility and the whether staff recommends council move forward with a PTE in terms of discussing that this may go back to them and then have to be added to their budget. That conversation has not taken place.
Fair enough. Now, I'm, I'm thinking ahead a little bit here. Do the properties in the table on page 11 of the report all come up for consideration at the same time? It's, it's mostly religious properties or?
The, in Appendix B, that's Appendix B. So it is primarily religious organizations. The majority of them were granted a five-year PTE. Top of mind, I don't know the exact date of expiry, but they were granted a five-year PTE for the most, most part.
Okay, and so last question. And again, thinking ahead, so seven of the nine of those properties are owned by religious organizations, institutions. Does the District of Squamish have any authority to begin collecting property tax at some point in the future on those properties? Or are we bound by provincial, federal?
A portion of the property does receive a statutory exemption. So council doesn't have discretion when it comes to statutory exemptions for the religious organizations. However, the land surrounding where the statutory exemption isn't, doesn't apply to, is where the PTE can be granted and that's at council's discretion.
Very good. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Counselor Penningill for asking my question around the, the policy piece because a yes, yes should be equal yes if we get it just right. So I appreciate that there's more work to be done there. And it was quite, in our last discussion around development of that, of that policy, it was quite interesting to look at the different options that were available. So I do agree with your, the, the assessment there. And so not seeing any further questions. Could I entertain a motion if? Yep. Oh, is that, okay, so.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sorry. Yes, of course. There you are. Hello, Mary Elliott. Yes, please ask a question.
I just wanted to clarify through the chair that we haven't granted a PT to the Montezori School, but they have applied multiple times. So I think we're being consistent. Not changing anything.
Thank you for that context. So I'll, I will move, I'll move the staff recommendation excluding the, the golf course, the Forestry Center Society and the Railway Park to be voted on individually. Is that clear enough? Yes.
The motion as it reads right now is that the District of Squamish advertise and bring forward the bylaws for consideration at the next meeting. I'm just not sure why we can't do that as one motion.
Ms. Arthurs, you want to?
The way I understood the question earlier was that certain counselors didn't want to be put in a position of directing to bring forward the bylaws to which they haven't declared their conflict, so the package, and that that was why you were separating, separating it out, but. So.
Okay, Counselor Race.
Yeah, my conflict is, in, in previous years, has been the result of declaring the conflict is not to take part in discussion or any voting with respect to the item in conflict. So that excludes discussion and would include any vote. And it's, it's even things like fourth reading on a zoning bylaw where it's a rubber stamp and stuff like that.
Okay, so my motion will, will stand, will separate out those, those three, those three topics. And we'll deal with them all individually going forward. Counselor French, are you seconding that? Thank you. Any else, I'll speak to it. I'd like to thank staff for bringing forward the, the policy adjustments that allowed for consideration of the affordable, of this permissive tax exemption to be used for affordable housing. I thought that was innovative and sort of filled some holes. And I think it was applied very mindfully to make sure that it's achieving the outcome, which is helping these, these entities that provide this service, not facilitating a provincial download. So I'm very appreciative of that. And, and so I'll be supporting the motion. Anyone else wish to speak to this before we call the question? We'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. So as we did last time, we'll get Counselor Anderson and Counselor Race to step out and we'll discuss the, the, start with the, start with the golf club and then we'll do the the in and out. Counselor Stoner.
I'll move that the District of Squamish advertise and bring forward to the District of Squamish 2023 permissive tax exemption bylaws for the golf club, Squamish Valley Golf Club, for consideration at the regular business meeting.
Thank you. I'll second that. Any discussion on this point? Okay, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. You're gonna grab Counselor Race back? Thank you. So now we'll entertain, go ahead, Counselor French.
I'll move all the same wording, Forestry Center.
Okay, Counselor Penningill seconds that. Okay, well.
That the District of Squamish advertise and bring forward the District of Squamish 2023 permissive tax exemption bylaws for regarding the heritage, Railway Heritage, sorry, Cedar Sky Forestry for consideration at the regular business meeting.
Counselor Penningill, does that represent what you seconded? Okay. Anyone like to speak to this one? Seeing no hands, I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Race, I'll get you to trade out with Counselor Anderson and we'll get this all the way over the line. Yes, Counselor Stoner.
I'll move that the District of Squamish advertise and bring forward the District of Squamish 2023 permissive tax exemption for the West Coast Railway Association for consideration at the regular business meeting to be held on October 4th.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Penningill. Any comments? I'll call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. And we got there in the end. Thank you. Thank you so much for this. And we look forward to seeing that back on October 4th. Okay, next up, we've got item eight, changes to council correspondence policy. And we've got Mr. Valoret here to run us through it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before you, you have a report and policy changes. They're recommended by staff to acknowledge the growth in the size of the community and the associated volume and complexity of correspondence that we receive. Policy is intended to formalize what is default staff responsibility for processing and responding to correspondence while maintaining transparency for council and for the public. Correspondence, or in some cases, a summary of similar correspondence that's related to corporate business or council business will continue to be placed on council agendas, either for information or for decision-making. and may also include staff responses or staff recommendations. Operational and routine requests will still be handled by individual staff departments. The council@squamish.ca email will be maintained. We think that residents are familiar with it and accustomed to it. However, the auto reply will lay out a clear procedure for how a correspondence is handled to provide clarity, and will also direct residents to other targeted avenues for public input. A mayor@ email will be added for administrative options and for flexibility for the mayor. And so these these recommended changes overall will streamline efforts and improve responsiveness. And you'll note, we've also added guidance for staff to maintain a safe and respectful workplace. And in keeping with the example of other local governments, we've added guidance for correspondence to individual councillors or to three or fewer councillors. That guidance is on conveying corporate, collective corporate decisions. So in the package, you have first thing is the clean revised policy. And then behind that is the black line or track changes version, and then the previous policy that was last amended in July of 2021. Just quickly run through it defines council correspondence. We removed fax correspondence. We always say that staff doesn't have a crystal ball, but we're pretty confident that faxes is no longer will be received. At least, we hope not. Corporate officer or delegate will assign correspondence. Staff may refer correspondence to the agenda. More language on the auto reply. We've added some staff considerations for replying, being that the response, the request is reasonable, has to do with public safety, is feasible within budget and staff resources, and is achievable without disruption. And as I mentioned about a respectful workplace, we've added language dealing with threats, defamatory or inappropriate language. Those are referred to the CAO, which may lead to a standard response or potentially a non-response, depending on the CAO discretion. And happy to answer questions on the report or the policy as it's laid out.
Thank you, Councilor Stoner.
Thank you. I think these amendments are great, and they help to streamline what can sometimes feel a bit like an overwhelming process. I just had one question in the new policy. It speaks to the council mail library will be accessible to the public via the district website. And I'm just wondering if you could elaborate on that a little bit. I don't think the council mail library is currently available to the public, so I'm not too sure what that looks like.
Thank you for the question through the chair. Anything, any correspondence that is not subject to confidentiality or privacy constraints, that portal would, the portal that currently has council mail would be open for public viewing, including staff responses as they are added.
That would be a very helpful step. Great. Thank you.
Councilor Penningill.
Yeah, just making sure I'm clear on the process thing. So in this case, it wouldn't be just here's a window into the mailbox. It would be sort of addresses or private contact information, identifying information would be redacted the same way they are on our agendas currently.
That's correct.
Okay, and then so if I understand the policy, the mail will go to this council mail library. Then it will be up to us. If we want to speak to it on an agenda, we can do that. And I suppose we would notify the mayor a certain timeline before the next agenda? Or like, how does that process work? And can we pull stuff from the library from three months ago? Or is there a like, it's only something recent and there's some definition for that?
Those are good questions. There's no certainly no time limitations, the way it's written, although council could choose to introduce that. The and it is written as one, as a single councillor can ask for it to be added to an agenda. And that would go, I believe, directly as staff, not necessarily through the mayor. But that that request would be honored as long as it's, you know, not a confidential or privacy related matter.
Okay, if if I can comment a bit, I guess I wonder if that opens up things a bit too far. I mean, so right now it goes on that agenda. That's your opportunity to talk about it or put forward a motion. And then failing that, if you miss that opportunity, then it's either a notice of motion or talking to the the chair, I think. And maybe it's not a bad thing that we open up the whole mail history, but it does seem like it. If one person can bring it back without a second or maybe opens us up for rehashing a bunch of stuff that, you know, that there needs to be a bit more of a group consensus right now that this is the topic we want to address at a particular meeting.
I'll I'll take that as a bit of a comment at this point. I'll mull it I'll mull it over unless there's a, there didn't seem to be a staff. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Hi, through the chair. I just wanted to mention that the mayor still has final approval over the agenda. So if council had requested an item be on the agenda, it's still it's still a mayoral decision over the agenda in the long run.
Thank you for that. And with that, I'll go to our mayor, Mary Elliott.
I know the bullet says any councillor can refer correspondence to a council agenda, but I think it should say to whom. So do we send it to the executive coordinator? Do we send it to ledge services? How do we get it on an agenda? And I think that that should be clarified.
We just have a two minute huddle here.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, so similarly to the way other correspondence are referred through the corporate officer who made delegate it. And then that final approval goes through the mayor, goes to the mayor once it's placed on the agenda.
Sorry, I didn't catch all that. Could you repeat that?
Yes, the correspondence would will be referred to the corporate officer or their delegate placed on the agenda, and that is still open to final approval by the mayor.
I'm a little bit, I I recognize that the the mayor has say over the agenda. One thing to keep an eye on is that if you have councillors in the minority who are trying to put something they care about on the agenda, and the mayor is in opposition to that feeling, they do have the power then to keep silencing that item off the agenda. So I don't know that we fix that today. I mean, we have a code of conduct that would suggest no one would act in that manner. They would act in a fair and equitable manner. But it is a potential risk. So I think if we add that piece around the corporate officer or their designate, that's helpful. But yeah, at the end of the day, I I have a say over the agenda right now, but the correspondence goes on. But then any councillor can pull something off the consent agenda that they want to speak to, and that is not my it's not under my control. So I just want to make sure that we don't lose that ability for councillors to move items onto the agenda and not have the the mayor kibosh. It's not like I'm going to say in a meeting, no, I don't want you to pull that letter and speak to it.
Thank you. We'll come back to you, Councilor Penningill. I've got a question here before we go back.
I have another question, so.
Yeah, I don't see a
But I don't know.
I don't see a staff response to your to your comments, but we'll give them a second to see if that's worth coming or if we move on.
Through the chair, we can, we can look at a way of separating correspondence. I guess it would be removing it from mayoral approval. We'd have to look at which through which bylaw our CAO suggests the procedure bylaw. We'd have to check. That is a possibility if if you council wishes to remove that the veto, I guess, of of a councillor adding correspondence.
To me, it's not an issue we need to resolve today, but I think we should direct staff to go back and take another look at it so that we close that potential loophole. But I do think adding just by forwarding to the corporate officer or their designate makes sense. And then further down, it says correspondence or complaints received by council about staff or district processes, which includes threats, defamatory and appropriate language, may be referred to the CAO for response. But I think we should say will not not be published because why would we? They're either confidential or else they're so inappropriate, we wouldn't want to give this those kinds of letters airtime and may be referred to the CEO for response at their at the CEO's discretion. I've just seen some correspondence come through that's not fit for public consumption and also not worth the time to reply. That doesn't happen very often. I can't think of more than one or two scenarios. But like, I wouldn't require a response. And I certainly think it should be made clear to people that if they use inappropriate language, it won't appear on the the council mail.
Okay, thank you for that.
Just one more comment, Chair.
Go ahead.
Correspondence directed to four or more council members will be forwarded to the corporate officer by the mayor, acting mayor, for inclusion in the council mail library. It can go to four people right now who aren't on that list, right? So it could be Doug, Jenna, John and Eric. So I just think that clause should say mayor, acting mayor, or one of the four people involved who or one of the four people who received the correspondence. We can't always assume that the mayor and acting mayor were included in the four. Okay, now I think I'm done, Chair. Sorry.
Okay, that's a that's a great point. I wonder if the the duty to forward that on could be included in some other some other policy that that support that supports this, whether that's a code of conduct, minor amendment, or or something along those lines. If you end up in a conversation where you've been included with three other councillors, there's some onus on the individuals involved to forward that correspondence on. So I'll I'll leave that with with staff. I was curious around wasn't till this this discussion where it dawned on me around if it's in the the library, how far, how appropriate it is to go back to find it? Because if we're going to be discussing a topic or something's important, you could go through council library and find a piece of correspondence on almost every possible topic that we've ever dealt with. So the way that it is currently, the the correspondence gets, there's a bit of a lag time, but it appears on a on an agenda, and it's dealt with there. And it's and it's and then it goes into the into the system to either just be received for information or acted upon or whatever the decision is. So I'm just curious about having these this library sit there without having some framework around how long is reasonable to bring something forward, or if we can limit that, or if it's appropriate to just it just seems like a bit of a gap here.
I think, yeah, we would take council's input on two timelines. One would be how far back one can be referred to the agenda. And the other is, yeah, how long, you know, you could roll the council mail library over on a on a year, two years, six months and start to remove the remove that correspondence as it starts to get stale.
In our in our current procedure, when something's referred or received for information, how is that not kept with our our records, that that agenda package sort of a version of forever, however long that that is? And shouldn't that shouldn't this correspondence? Do we have an obligation to treat it the same way, even though it doesn't appear on an agenda?
So there's retention requirements required for agendas. And so anything that is officially on an agenda and received by council, there's retention. We've got agendas going back multiple decades. If it's not referred on an agenda and is not received officially by council, it it kicks into our retention bylaw schedule that we would retain the records in accordance to how we classify them. So we would have to actually take a look and say, okay, this is council correspondence not on an agenda, and then provide a classification. Or we will apply metadata to retention on the record that's by subject matter. So if it's a newsletter from the MP, for example, it it has a one year retention schedule requirement, and it would be gone. We don't need to keep certain things forever. Other things have a longer, very complex retention system attached to them. And those are things that are assigned through a particular piece of software that we utilize in alongside of SharePoint. So it's not an easy answer as to retention. We would have to actually take a look at what it is that council's contemplating. You know, is it a three year retention for everything? Is it two years? Is it for the term? You know, you could you could change the requirement for retention. But you also need to think about the usefulness of of that. And and think of historically, how many times have you gone back and actually looked for things? And are they always the same types of things? So, you know, if you could come up with a recommendation, we could take a peek at it.
Thank you. Well, I I suppose that highlights one of the reasons that you'd want a councillor would want to have a letter appear on the agenda to make sure that it moves into that sort of higher level of retention if it's of particular importance. I just wonder about having some mechanism to to identify those, so it's not up to council to sort of exclusively to be on the lookout for those ones that might warrant being being on the on the agenda and then thus have larger or have that that other level of higher level of retention and so on, so that it's it's captured. But okay, and how I know that this this system works in other or similar systems work in in other municipalities. And I'm just wondering how how it affects service, I guess, service delivery in the end and how that's gauged. Like, because others are doing it is one reason to do something. But are they doing it and having better out and having better outcomes? Are there challenges associated with? And I know that when humans don't like change, this would be a change for for me if I was to work inside this system from what we're doing now. So I'm just curious how how staff would would gauge success with this or has heard that others have engaging success with a policy like this.
Thank you. And in researching this and in discussing internally, there are, we heard quite a few instances where efforts are duplicated and the email comes in to, in this, in our case, 12 or 14 people. And it's it's actioned by, you know, especially in some months of the year when, you know, every, I think, people tend to think that nobody's paying attention. Somebody will, oh, I can jump in and help with this. So what you get is two or three different people working potentially cross purposes. So we've, we've heard that. Also, one of the local governments that's described in the report, it was viewed viewed as a direct, a direct line to council, and there was onus on council to to respond. And I think that's in the in the case of Squamish, it's it's maybe no longer feasible for for that expectation that you can, you know, send off an email and and all of council will 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 look at it. So certainly in terms of not having to wait two weeks to get on an agenda, and in terms of assigning it to one person who then collects all the information and and that response goes back out to council, there's a lot of and and that response goes back out to council, there's a lot of, uh, a lot of streamlining, a lot of efficiency. And I think those are the two main two main places where where there are significant gains. Um, and it, and it reduces, um, it does take out the volume and and brings operational or simple issues that, um, keeps them at the staff level. Um, and keeps kind of allows council to stay focused on governance and and corporate issues.
Thank you. Um, oh, yes, go ahead, Ms. Glendale.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to add to that, too. In terms of our action tracker, um, Mr. Valeriot did do some preliminary data pulling. And, um, in the last, I think it was two years that you did, not the whole term, four, was it four? For the whole term, um, approximately forty-seven percent of all motions in the action tractor tracker were as a result of correspondence. So as we try to grow the organization to a place where we're serving a much larger community, we're focused on strategic priorities in the council chamber. Um, that's forty percent, forty-seven percent of your motions came out of letters as opposed to strategy. If many of those can be dealt with immediately by staff at an operational level, then it definitely streamlines council's work, it streamlines staff work and and keeps council at a very much more strategic level.
Thank you for that context. That's, that's great information to have. Is there a review times set out with this as we roll out a new, a new policy? Is it an, an annual, uh, check-in or i- in the first, in the first year? Is that something that's, um, that staff's considered at this point?
Through you, Mr. Cherry, it's, uh, it's a good suggestion. I think it's, I, I don't think there's a mandated timeline for reviewing these policies, but, um, in it, with a change like this, it seems like it would be a good idea to see how it's working, um, you know, be essentially one year into the next council's term.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Penagel.
Yeah, just as, as we're talking, I mean, a- as a counselor, I, I'm not always able to respond to every email, but I do read them all. And so in terms of my workload, I don't see this, my personal workload, I don't see this changing. I can see, um, some efficiencies for staff. But I wonder, you know, managing the whole how far back we go and so on and so forth. I- is there an opportunity with a procedures by law change to just sort of keep including correspondence like we do, but not on a consent agenda, not a motion to receive? It's just there. That is our opportunity to pull something, otherwise we just don't talk about it. What that does is put sort of an automatic timeline on, on what things we can pull and when, or some sort of fences around that. And it keeps people, because I think it is important, people want to see what they've written on an agenda. That seems like an important piece of the process for some people. So I, I'm just wondering if we, if there's an opportunity to tweak this one piece, but still sort of take it out of so there's not resolutions about it and so on and so forth.
Thank you through the chair. Um, appreciate the concerns, um, and also appreciate that this doesn't reduce council's workload. The expectation is that council still reads all of the correspondence. Uh, the objective is to streamline the actual a, a, agenda itself in a council meeting and also not have one letter writer direct the work of staff through council. Otherwise, um, pulling away from strategic priorities. That said, it does enable a counselor to have a piece of correspondence, recognize that, hey, this is something we want to elevate to an agenda level. And it's that extra step to bring it forward. The portal that we're talking about, one example of a municipality that we've seen, they actually have a, a page on their website where all the letters are listed. And so people can go and see where their letter shows up. Um, we are trying to shift away from the expectation. We're twenty-four thousand people now in this community. And to be perfectly frank, we cannot answer every single email. And we certainly can't operate from a place where correspondence drives council's work and then staff's work. So we are trying to preserve the integrity of that correspondence and people's ability, each citizen's ability to reach out to council to, yes, hear back from staff. And protect the agenda of council and and the process to make it more sophisticated and a bit more strategic.
Go ahead, Counselor Penagel.
So if I can just, uh, follow up on that a little bit, um, and I can appreciate that, and so if we make these changes to deal with, um, or to avoid counselors directing staff work based on an individual emails, that makes sense to me. But a lot of these do relate to a policy piece or something we're talking about. And right now, in addition to the correspondence section, we will see emails attached to, um, for example, a rezoning or, or maybe a sort of a neighborhood planning process where it's sort of engagement in the context of, of, um, policy work. And so would we still see correspondence grouped and surfaced at that point, like in a neighborhood planning process? Would, would it still come forward that way when it's sort of part of the whole context for a policy piece?
Yeah, it's in the policy.
Okay, sorry. And that's what I wasn't clear about is.
I think Mary Elliott may have answered that question on staff's behalf, and I will go to Mary Elliott now, uh, with her questions.
Yeah, sorry, it is getting late. And I think that we're going round and round on a policy that is about continuous improvement, not perfection. And I think, as we already heard, this is about improving service to the community so that they're not waiting two weeks. So like, there's a really good example where we got, um, an email from a woman who was asking why the lights were out underneath the bridge. And she needed an answer, not wait two weeks for it to go on an agenda. And fortunately, Ms. Gunn has picked up that letter, has now provided this woman with a response, and we haven't touched it. And I think that's what we're trying to do here is improve service to our community when they have questions about, um, uh, fixing things or how things work. Um, and our, our staff are best placed to do that and and they can do that more immediately. We still, as a council, get to review this portal and look for those themes so that they can inform uh, strategic plan updates and looking for places where we should be bringing something to the table at a policy level because we can see it. And it's allowing, um, still for the information attached to a rezoning, a public hearing, neighborhood plan. It's all going to come together with that plan. It's not going to just stay on the portal, it'll come as part of staff's report to council. So I don't think we're losing anything here. I think it's in our best interest to move this policy with some of the suggestion changes people have made today and try it out. I think the one good addition that I heard is to put a review date on the policy, um, for, for, um, probably not during budget twenty-twenty-three, but I'd say January twenty-twenty-four. And so that the new council has a year to work with it. I don't think people are going to go digging down in the archives to bring back a letter from ten years ago. But if that happens, then you can deal with it. So I think this is a really thoughtful and careful and still service-oriented approach uh, to maturing our correspondence policy, um, without us needing to make it perfect today. Let's, let's try it out and improve it a year from now. So I will, so if someone's going to move this forward, I think they should add a review of January twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you for that. I've got Counselor Race on the next up.
No, I'll be quick. I just had some thoughts about, um, sort of the rogue mayor or the rogue counselor, if you like. If you have, uh, a mayor who tries to block things going on the agenda, or you have a counselor who abuses this and wants to go back and get all the correspondence for the last ten years on a particularly pet project. You could set limits around that through, I mean, the legislated safety valve that we have right now is the notice of motion where a counselor can bring something back. And we could consider, you know, if a mayor refused to put something on an agenda, then a council already, counselor already has the ability to put that on the floor. Uh, and if a counselor wanted something, and I'm just thinking aloud piece of correspondence beyond three months, um, then they could, eh, they could request put that on the floor as well through a notice of motion, and it would take a resolution to council to go back more than three months, for example, um, to do it. So that kind of stuff is already there, I think, um, for the safety valve thing for the rogues. It's already built into our legislation and our procedure by law.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion on this before we consider a motion? Okay. Counsel, we're looking for, um, a motion on, on this. I will move the staff recommendation and add, um, that the policy be, uh, reviewed in, um, in Q one of twenty-twenty-four. And incorporate, well, we're approving the, uh, the policy in this meeting, so the feedback received, I I didn't hear anything that really changed what was here. It was more probing. Sorry, Counselor Storer.
I heard some fairly good suggestions from Mayor Elliott, uh, in terms of clarifying some of the components. There is some, uh, components around, um, so I'm just looking for the right language.
I'll retract my motion as and let you take a, take a swing at it.
Uh, I will move that. Oh, we are in a special meeting though, right? I'll move that the District of Squamish amend the council correspondence policy with feedback as pres- as received from council in the September twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two meeting. And that it be brought back for review in January twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you, and seconded by Counselor Race. Um, anyone like to speak to this? Uh, Counselor Anderson and then Counselor Penagel.
Thank you. A couple of general comments to start with. Uh, we've had a presentation on an inclusion strategy and Ms. Glendale Day has spoken further about our culture and values uh, here at the district and our relationship to our citizens. I think we have to keep this in mind here. We do receive handwritten letters. I can think of a, a certain director of the Trail Society who every, a few times a year delivers a handwritten letter. There are folks out there who follow our work and do so in the comfortable space or through the comfortable space, a familiar space of the council agenda. And those, some of those people may be intimidated by Lex Talk Squamish. In fact, I do know of such persons who, some persons who have actually said this. In the, in the circumstance of the mail library, we've had some discussion about, uh, how this is going to work and how it's changed. And I, I assume that this mail library is now going to be a public archive. Uh, relates some experience. Uh, I recall the instance of a letter received from a local government, local organization that was referred to staff for a response. And about four to five months later, we got another letter from the same organization, wondering where, when, when there might be a response. And so I looked into our archive accessible to council members and I found that there was a technical glitch uh, preventing me from accessing letters going back four to five months ago. The point being that accessibility for that archive is important and that that accessibility be monitored and managed well through our I T experts and that we should take this very seriously. Finally, I'd like to make the observation regarding, uh, the emphasis, uh, that's, uh, coming from our staff. And Mayor Elliott has mentioned this, we need to protect our agenda. And, and we want to as much as possible focus on strategy as, as what guides us. And this does not only, um, relate to letters and correspondence that, uh, it's astounding statistic that forty-seven percent of our motions come from the correspondence. It also relates to delegations. And we have actually discussed early in our term whether our procedural bylaw or procedures might need to be considered. In the, in the example came from a group of students who had a proposal regarding plastic bags. Well, we jumped on it, all of us enthusiastically, but it wasn't exactly coming from the strategy that staff were going to, uh, suggest to us. And it did have its impact on our waste management, uh, schedule of initiatives. So that issue of protecting our agenda, focusing on where strategy should be taking us, doesn't only, uh, involve correspondence. It can also involve delegations and what might come forward i- in the discussions from delegations. Thank you. I'm appreciating the suggestion of a review after year one or around that area.
Thank you, Counselor Penagel.
Yeah, a question or clarification to the mover. Is the intent that we consider the feedback in Q one twenty-twenty-four? Or if it's, if it comes back with the feedback incorporated? I'm just wondering if you can clarify what feedback you had in mind.
So I was, uh, moving endorsement of the policy with the amendments that had been suggested by Mayor Elliott.
Can someone refresh my memory?
Yes, go ahead.
Make sure to see if my notes do it justice here. There's a couple of things, uh, where, who it is forwarded to, more language on, uh, defamatory correspondence. Language on, on, or guidance on four or more counselors, how that, how that would, uh, play in. And then, uh, the one-year review, of course, and potentially a deadline, uh, Counselor Race mentioned three months. That seems like a good suggestion. And the other piece, I guess, where we might like some guidance is, uh, we would retain these records as required by law, but it's a matter of the transparency for the public portal. How, how lo- how long is appropriate to leave, leave correspondence on there? And that's something we can include or not include, but would need guidance on, um, something in the order of a year seems, may seem appropriate. Anyway, those, those are the, um, pieces that, uh, and then just comparing it to the code of conduct and procedure by law to make sure that they're all aligned.
Thank you. I saw a hand from Mayor Elliott. And just as a point of, uh, uh, an interesting fact, our mover has left the, has now left the meeting, although she's going to call in. So, um, I'm not sure what that means quite yet, but go ahead, Mary Elliott.
Uh, I just want to clarify that my three comments were the, do we really need to respond to, um, aggressive and inflammatory emails? And, uh, that they wouldn't go on the public record, uh, that we did have to deal with, uh, the four people receiving correspondence, one of them not being the mayor or acting mayor, and that we just need to clarify whom council should refer correspondence to, which we did, it's a corporate officer or their delegate. Those were my three suggestions. Uh, I feel like the, a- anything around, um, how long we archive or a timeline should be brought back at the review in twenty-twenty-four because I believe we will just go around and around in circles today without good staff advice. So I would say those two issues are, are, this gives staff time and opportunity to study it, make sure it's aligned with our other policies and bring back their best advice in January twenty-twenty-four. I don't think it will impact the, the policy and, and its functionality in its first year.
Thank you for that clarification, Mary Elliott. Are we still okay if the movers, okay, sorry. Thank you. I, I like the, uh, I like the direction that this is going. I am looking forward to, um, or I could see the benefit of having a cleaner, uh, inbox to look after, uh, although this creates another one to go check, but I think that's, uh, appropriate in this case. I do think, um, one of the key things for this to work well will be the, um, how that portal interfaces with, um, the email system that's set up for council so that if you want to reply or if you need to do something with that correspondence there, that works well. So as board goes into the functionality of the proposed, uh, portal than it does to, uh, this, this policy. And, uh, it just needs to be as, as straightforward and integrated as, as possible so that, uh, it's easy to do, um, otherwise things that are hard to do, just move down people's lists just as, uh, human behavior goes. So any other comments on this before we call the question? So with that, uh, any oppose? Oops, sorry, Mary Elliott.
I just, I just forgot to speak to, um, the mayor at address. And I think it's that, to me, is a part about increasing accessibility. Um, early in the term, people had trouble making sure there was two Ls and two Ts in my names and a few emails went astray. And so I think it just simplifies it. Everyone remembers the title. It gets to you, um, and you can manage, um, your correspondence, uh, through that, um, with the public. Uh, and then the named email is, um, for in- internal business. And, uh, I think it just makes it simpler for the public to get in touch. And also, uh, you don't need to, to change that archiving system for that email from term to term to term. It's always going to the same email box. It's always going to the same email box. So it simplifies things on the backend there, too. So I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you for that. And now I'm going to call the question. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much. And next up, we have motion to close, moved by Counselor Race, seconded by, I'll second that. Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll go on recess for 15 minutes to set up the room. So we'll be back at 6 o'clock or just before. Thank you. On the closed link, of course.